Call to order the regular township, Chesterfield Township Board meeting for August 10th. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Clerk Barry, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Kirsten.
Here.
Treasurer Elliott.
Here.
Trustee Anderson.
Here.
Trustee Joseph.
Here.
Trustee Vossberg.
Here.
Clerk Barry is here. Trustee DeMink is going to be absent this evening. I would like to make a motion to excuse Trustee DeMink from tonight's meeting.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Trustee DeMink is excused. Approval of the regular agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the regular agenda? Clerk Barry?
Item four A is approval of the regular agenda with a denim if necessary. Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Barry, support by Trustee Vossberg. Clerk Barry, call the roll.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Vossberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye. Item five, presentations.
Item five A is to approve a recommendation by the police department to present two new patrol officers, Jason Ulotowski and Eric Pleppy, for the oath of office.
Interim Chief Franks?
Thank you. Would like to present our two new officers select to the board for swearing in. Both young men are from Macomb County, grew up in Macomb County. Mr. Ulotowski has since left us to move to LaPierre for greener pastures, but he still has a lot of commitment here. He's a graduate from Stevenson High School. Recently, we took him from West Bloomfield as a public safety officer over there and he decided to come out here to Chesterfield. Graduated Macomb's Police Academy, their first part-time in, I think, 20 years. He's got a lot of experience in life, some experience in police office. We're glad to have him. We have Mr. Pleppy, he's also a Macomb County resident. Graduated from a Macomb Police Academy just recently this year. He attended, was it Stevenson? Not Stevenson, Chippewa High School. Lives in a Macomb Township, local to us, and young, vibrant, excited, and he's here to join the Chesterfield ranks. Guys want to stand up?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome to Chesterfield Township. Item six, department reports. Treasurer Vossberg will start up here.
Thank you. I have a report from the Leisure Services. This summer's concert series concludes this week. Help us welcome country favorite, The Family Tradition Band on Friday, August 13. Concerts take place at the Township municipal offices at 6:30 PM. Leisure Services would like to thank the Chesterfield Township Board and our presenting sponsor, Genesis Credit Union. Their contributions are what make cost-free community concerts possible. See you on Friday. Registration for Chesterfield Township's Fall Frenzy Baseball League is now available. Coed T-ball, pitching machine, minor and major baseball leagues are available for boys and girls ages five through 12. This fall, league happens fast, is fun, and is a great way to introduce kids to the sport. The seasoned athlete gains some outdoor conditioning in an encouraging learning environment where fundamentals are built and skills can be enhanced. Registration's accepted in person or online through August 27. And the last one is the fall edition of The Chesterfield Connection is expected to land in residential mailboxes the week of August 23 or sooner. This publication is your key to all things Chesterfield for the months of September through December. Registration for recreation and senior citizen offerings will begin on August 25. Programs are limited in capacity and sometimes fill fast. Call 586-949-0400, extension four, for further information. Thank you.
Treasurer Elliott, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Chesterfield Township is going to have a night at Jimmy John's Field on Friday, September 3rd. The game time is 7:05 and purchase your discounted infield seat online at USPBL.com. Use promo code Chesterfield21. Feel like a guest of honor when your community is recognized on the scoreboard, announced over the PA, and the first pitch is going to be thrown by our own township supervisor, Brad Kirsten. Enjoy America's favorite pastime in a fun environment with great friends, good times, and perfectly suitable for the entire family. Thank you.
Thank you Treasurer Elliott. Trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Two quick ones here. Tomorrow at the Chesterfield Township Library, 50560, Patricia Street, there'll be a presentation at 6:30 by Mr. Adam Mueller of the library. Learn about the cat who was carried a mile away during the 67, 1964 tornado. There'll be a slide presentation and a lot of information regarding that. Also this weekend, August 14th, Saturday, between 10:00 to 4:00 PM, and Sunday, August 15th, from 10:00 to 3:00 PM, there'll be a Vietnam reenactment at the Historical Village. It's presented by the Michigan Military Technical and Historical Society. Food and drinks are available for purchase. Entrance fee is a dollar donation for a person or $2 for family. Thank you.
Trustee Joseph?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Was the slide presentation of the library, was that on the cat or on the library?
I think it's gonna be the cat.
The cat, okay. With the library, I'd like to update the board and residents. I'm sure everyone is aware that the proposed one mil increase that was put forth on August 3rd failed, and the library board met on August 4th to discuss what they had scheduled the meeting for, was hopefully a congratulatory and a celebration, and they were, you know, disappointed obviously in the outcome of the ballot initiative. But what was discussed was very interesting, and I was very, very proud of the library board members, and that is, there was some talk of potentially putting the ballot initiative back out on the November ballot. And what occurred with the library board is a very frank discussion about the library as it relates to the township and meeting the township's needs, and so they've elected not to put the ballot initiative back out for redo, if you will, in November, but instead to look at alternatives, partnering with other, well, just a whole host of options. But the general consensus was that there was a need to take some time and reevaluate the library operation here in Chesterfield. So, good things happening with that group, and I was, as I say, very, very, very proud of them. The other issue that I wanted to advise the board, we got some correspondence from Deputy Supervisor Duchene, but that was Trustee Anderson and I are the Department of Public Safety liaisons from the board, and the discussion that has been ongoing about public safety, we are very committed to the public safety model, and with the promotion of Supervisor Kirsten, taking our public safety director and in essence now appointing him as the supervisor, we have sort of bifurcated the operation, again, separated the operation. So we have Fire Chief Miller and interim Police Chief Franks holding down their respective departments. And what we would like to do is get back to the public safety director position, and it requires some time, a little bit of time to evaluate all applicants that may be interested in that position, both in the fire and the police operations side. So it's my understanding that we will, I don't have timelines as of yet, but as we have handled promotions and elevations in the past, it's handled by a separate assessment center, which will come in and do a very unbiased evaluation of all the candidates and make recommendations to the supervisor and the board regarding scoring. It gets very difficult in these positions, especially when we have such a talented pool of individuals that we all know and personally have relationships with. We don't want to have it be a popularity contest or something that we bias one another with because of our personal relationships. So the assessment center route is the most unbiased and, I think, effective way to handle our next public safety director. So that process will be beginning shortly, and Mr. Anderson and I will continue to update the board if anything comes to light. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Joseph, Clerk Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. As many of you know, we recently had an election. Trustee Joseph alluded to that regarding the library millage. It was incorrectly reported by the media, the local media, that evening that the library millage passed instead of failed. They actually had inverted the numbers. That was a failure of the media. We did contact the media immediately the following morning to let them know that an error had been made and that they needed to make that correction. So, but there was a bit of a confusion for people who were watching, especially on social media, on election night because we were reporting one result and the media was reporting another result. So, just so everyone is aware, the media did get it wrong. Shocking, I know. But it was correctly reported on our Facebook page as well as on the county clerk's website, which is where I always advise people to go for the most accurate and updated election information. The November general election is November the 3rd of this year, and that will be the general election to fill the vacancy of the state senate seat that was vacated when former state senator, now prosecutor, Peter Lucido won election to that post last November. So, we had the primary and now the general will take place to fill that vacancy, and that will be November the 3rd, 2021. If you would like an absentee ballot for that application, excuse me, for that election, please remember that we need to receive a completed application from you, and then we can issue you a ballot. If we do not have a completed application unfiled for you for that election, you will not receive a ballot. So we had several people ask where their ballots were because they had friends and colleagues that were receiving ballots, and they did not realize they had not submitted an application. So please, we want to encourage everyone to vote, and in order to provide you with an absentee ballot, you must have a completed application for you unfiled. You can get that online as well as in our office. Online, you can access that 24 hours a day. You can complete that, print it out, and drop it off at our office, or you can ask for one to be sent to you, or you can fill one out here at the office. So, many ways to accomplish that for you. Also, it is travel time. A lot of people starting to travel again. We do process passports here at the clerk's office. I highly encourage you, if you would like to travel internationally, to come to the clerk's office. We are a one-stop-shop. You can have your picture taken. You can complete an application, whether it's for a passport card or the passport book. The only thing we cannot do is we cannot do passport renewals. No passport agent can do that. That must take place by mail through the U.S. Department of State. But any new passport, or if you have a passport that has been expired more than five years, then we can go ahead and get you a new passport, or if you would like the card, we can do that as well. Expedited services are also available from the clerk's department, and the Chesterfield Township clerk's office has been recognized as one of the top 1% of all passport agencies in the country. So, we're very proud of that, and we know that we will service you well here. Final information on voter turnout for the Chesterfield Township electorate. We were a 21% voter turnout in the August primary, which I am very happy to say was the number one community in Macomb County. We had a higher turnout than any other community in Macomb, and I'm very pleased and proud of our staff for assisting people and allowing that to happen. So, please come out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you Clerk Barry. Just a couple items from my department. You'll see in the consent agenda, there's some interrogatories back and forth for the board to look at, particularly about two topics that the supervisor's office administratively looked at today, over the past two weeks. One of them's the Grashit property, and what are we gonna do with it? And then the other one is the garbage cart program that we set forth, a meeting with our current vendor, and to discuss how we can come to an end with that garbage cart program. There's some discussions that you'll see in there. The deputy supervisor will continue to get that information out in this format. We'll modify it just so it's more summary than anything for you. So, you will see that in the consent agenda. That's all I have. Item seven, Clerk Barry?
Item seven A is the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered routine by the board and will be enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of these items. If discussion of any item is required by a board member, it will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Public comments on the consent agenda items are permitted. Seven A, approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of July 27th, 2021. Approval of the payment of bills as submitted by the finance department. Seven C, approve a recommendation from the fire department to pay an invoice from Emerald Coast in the amount of $16,170 from GL number 205340976000. And seven D, management reports submitted in accordance with APO 042018, Board Rules and Procedures, Consent Agenda 4.3, Section 7C.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Barry, support by Treasurer Elliott. Clerk Barry?
Clerk Barry, aye. Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Vossberg.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye. Regular agenda, nine A, Clerk Barry?
Nine A is postponed from the July 27th, 2021, regular township board meeting to consider a request from Redwood Living to conditionally rezone parcel 0923101007 from A1 Agricultural to RM1 Multiple Family Residential.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, Jonathan, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Yeah, this is a continuation from the last meeting. There was some additional information provided in the packet, so we're picking up from there. But just to recap, this is the old driving range property on 23 Mile Road, 33190, 23 Mile Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural to RM1 multifamily with some conditions. The conditions are specific to the product that Redwood provides. I believe they're gonna do a presentation so I can let them get into that when they come up here. The planning commission did have a public hearing over a couple of meetings. They are recommending to the board denial of the request for reasons outlined in the minutes and in the Giffords Webster review of the rezoning, that the proposal is not consistent with the master plan, that there are other areas of the township that are designated for multifamily use, and that there has been commercial development interests as recently as last year. So, those are the reasons provided with that. I can answer any questions, or I believe Emily is gonna do a presentation for Redwood.
Is the applicant here? Yes. You may.
Hello. My name is Emily Engelhardt, address 3100 Telegraph Road, Suite 366, Bingham Farms, Michigan 48025. I know this worked before, so, there we go. Good evening. It's nice to see you all again. You've seen my face probably quite a lot. Oh, let me see if I can get this a little bit more clear for you. So I am here to make a presentation to you, oh, sorry, it's showing different on my screen than yours, about Redwood. I know you all know about Redwood because we've shared a lot with you. So, I'd like to discuss this project and property in particular. But first, I'd like to introduce who's here with me this evening. I have my colleague Patricia Ricosi with Redwood, she's VP of Acquisitions. Our counsel, Tyler Tennant with Strata Man. We have the property owners here, Ron and Deborah Lacharette and Sandra Boone. Their attorney, Gary Gendernalek, as well as the realtor who's been listing this property for some time, of Lino Realty. Lino Scammer, I'm gonna say it wrong, Scammer, and apologies, Lino. So, as Jonathan said, we had two, first, we came in and met with the township about a year ago about this property to do some preliminary discussions. We held a virtual meeting in February with the neighbors, the 300-foot radius neighbors. We offered a Zoom meeting. Several folks joined in and had a couple questions. At that time, then we proceeded on to the planning commission meetings. We had two meetings with them virtually over Zoom, and unfortunately, we did receive a denial, and we're back here. We were here last meeting, and we're here today to just share with you some information. And we understand that, you know, the planning commission did not recommend to approve us on this, but we do feel that we actually do fit with the goals of the master plan and some of the intent of the master plan, and we would hope that the board take a look at our information and potentially consider approving us this evening. So, we'll get started. I'm not gonna go through this again, but who is Redwood? Two-bedroom, two-bathroom apartments with an attached two-car garage, not age-restricted, but we find we're very popular, seniors, young professionals. We fit that missing middle housing gap. These are high rent, $1,700 to $2,100 a month. We've got very successful communities throughout the state and many states. And I just checked with our folks, and all three properties in Macomb County are 99% or 100% leased, and our Washington Township project, which is currently still under construction, has units leased that aren't even completed with COs yet. So, there's a demand here in Macomb County for Redwood. So why Chesterfield? I have been personally working for Redwood for almost 10 years, and we've been looking at Chesterfield from the start. And that is because our residents are already living here. We find that in our communities, folks are already living in the community, and they are seeking a different housing opportunity for whatever reason, whether it's seniors who don't want the maintenance, or they want the flexibility of their house nest egg, and they're not getting the tax deduction anymore, or young professionals who want peace and quiet. So they like what we have to offer. Over the last eight years, we've looked at multiple different sites. We've worked with Jonathan on several for different reasons. Those haven't worked out. And just on this map, you'll see little red Xs. There was a comment made in the planning commission minutes and in the Giffords report that there's 158 acres of RM1 land available. Well, I've gone through the zoning map, and for whatever reason, being too small to develop a Redwood encumbered by wetlands, already developed properties seem to be considered RM1. So, it just is, I don't feel that that's an accurate representation of readily available land for Redwood, and we have been looking because we want to be here. So when we came across this site, we wanted to jump in, and we felt that it is a very good fit for Redwood. And why is that? Because the site is a natural fit for us. We're surrounded by single-family, a little bit of multifamily, and commercial. As you can see, the single-family zoning surrounds us to the south, the east, the west. We've got the custard station and the mini golf to the right, and some commercial across the street, which unfortunately has been struggling a little bit. There's little things going in, but it's not as vibrant as I think it was intended to be. So this is a rather large parcel, and we feel that Redwood would make a wonderful transition from, you know, the single-family neighborhood next door to Redwood to commercial and 23 Mile Road. And I'll just note that the neighborhood to the, boy, west, the density of that, I believe, is 3.9 units per acre approximately. And what Redwood is proposing is 4.69 units per acre. So we're really not even a whole unit per acre more intense than what is already there. So, we feel that we're very compatible with the natural fit of the area. So I just wanted to spend a second about what are we actually proposing. So this is a plan that shows our prospective development. If you were to approve us this evening, we would still have to go through a full site plan approval with the planning commission. So, you know, we would have to go through and discuss buffers and landscaping units, all those different things, and those would all have to be worked out with the planning commission. So this is really a question of the rezoning. However, we've prepared this plan and attached some conditions to our rezoning offer, including a general plan of this, to give the township some comfort with who we are and what we want to do. So, we've got 136 units shown here, 4.69 units per acre. We are not proposing any connections to the neighboring subdivisions. And in fact, between Rosemary Drive, we're proposing our stormwater management, which would hopefully have a fountain and be a beautiful wet lake look, rather than any, you know, drive-through connections we wouldn't be adding to their traffic. And in addition, the seller's retaining some land in the northwest corner for a more suitable-sized potential commercial development. And as you can see, the different colors indicate different styles of units. The orange ones up front are front porch facing that look really attractive from the street, and we've got different floor plans, different units for folks. This is just a quick, it's like 40 seconds video of, I don't know how to play it though, of our property in Macomb Township, which sits right next to condos and single-family neighborhood that Anthony Lombardo is constructing. It's at 22 and North. So this is a Redwood project. It was built in 2014 or 2015. It's one of the ones that is 100% leased. the ones that is one hundred percent leased, and it's just been a great opportunity for us. And as you can see, across the detention pond, they're building single-family homes. This is just a different view of some of the back type backyards, as well as our sign. And then I've got a still photo of, I drove through in someone's home, and this is what their view from their backyard looks like across a pond, you know, through pine trees. So it's really a compatible residential use, we feel. And I just thought a video speaks better than me, maybe. All right. These are, I'll go through very quick, but they're just our look of our units. This is the front porch unit, as I had mentioned, different styles as you're driving down the street. So we have proposed a conditional rezoning here, again, because we felt it was more protective to the township. We have to abide by a concept plan. We have to abide by conditions that we have offered, and those would be recorded, cannot be changed. So we tried to give something to the township that you would know what you're getting. Obviously, we still have to go through site plan with details, but we feel we've given the township some comfort. So our offer includes these, which we are prohibiting any other uses, single-story building height limitation, we can't do anything above that, a density limitation, a building length limitation, ownership by a single entity exceed the current FASHA requirements for brick, and extra landscape depth along the western property line. So again, these are general and specific, so that the planning commission could work with them. Regarding the master plan, we feel that the intent of the master plan for this property, it calls for community-wide commercial, which allows C-two, three-C, or C-three, or C-four. And in that, they talk about regional and commercial uses, shopping centers, standalone. But C-four does also include the idea of HMR, which is high-rise, multiple-family, multifamily uses and apartments. And while there's different conditions for that, it does seem to show us, we feel, the intent that the township had was that multifamily may be compatible on the site. It may be an acceptable use, and what we're offering is a lot less dense than what could be built under HMR. And so we just thought that it was maybe a nice opportunity to show that we feel we maybe meet the intent of the master plan. I didn't write it, so I can't tell. But, and additionally, we meet so many of the master plan goals, which bringing different kinds of housing, affordable, attainable, varied density, allowing for different types of folks to live in the community, people who have been hanging on to their single-family home, even though they want to move out because they can't find somewhere else to go, and then families can't move up and move in and expand. So we allow for a lot of people to be able to stay in Chesterfield and come to Chesterfield. Additionally, we would be buffering from the intense use of commercial along Twenty-three that's existing across the street, and just, we feel we would be a less invasive use to the residents nearby. In addition, we, you know, have more compact development than other things, and feel that we would impact the Salt River less, potentially, and the wetlands, and it's our goal to work with those goals, and potentially expand the township's economy and tax base, as this is currently agricultural. I think I mentioned this last time. We did watch the discussion between the board and the planning commission, and just felt like this was exactly what the township was hoping for, and we hope you feel that it is at this site. So this is just a couple of the reasons we feel we fit in Chesterfield. Just what C-two, three, C-three, C-four allows for offices, motels, auto dealerships, different things, potentially a lot more lot coverage, and potentially a lot more traffic. We were able to do a quick traffic memo and showing that one hundred and thirty-six dwellings would cause six hundred and eighty-eight trips per day versus a big-box commercial developed at the extent of the site could cause ten thousand. So, you know, we would be reducing traffic. In fact, we show that we have less traffic than a single-family neighborhood. Very quickly, this was the information that was presented to you, the board, last meeting. So we hired an outside planner, Carmen Avantini, to review your master plan, as well as Redwood, with the idea to see if we were right, if we felt that, you know, we do comply with the master plan, the trends, the goals. And basically, his opinion was that this property is a difficult situation for commercial. Residential is maybe more consistent with the area and the trends, and, you know, it is, it allows us to achieve a lot of the objectives of the master plan, protect neighborhoods, create better commercial opportunities elsewhere by bringing more residents, and with that C-four, high-density, multifamily, that Redwood would be a better fit for the area if there is multifamily. So, as I'm sure you saw in the report. Secondly, we have a summary from Sharon Woods, who is a retail marketing expert, and she did, and looked at the area of commercial development. And her conclusions were what I think we all know. We went through a pandemic, and, you know, retail is not the same as it was, even when the master plan maybe was being looked at. But big boxes and boxes, they want to locate at large interchanges, freeways, I-ninety-four, Grashett, M-fifty-nine, where the big concentration is. And by maybe having our site that we're considering be considered as commercial, we're contributing to sprawl and having those hamlet areas that the master plan identifies potentially lose out on, you know, some commercial users who might want to go instead to the ninety-four, fifty-nine. So, and more residents would add to that. In addition, you know, she talks about the state of commercial, the fact that, you know, warehouses are becoming more popular than stores because everyone's ordering online. Formats are not going to go away, but they're going to become much smaller, and this is a large site. It's mid-block of Twenty-Three Mile Road, quite a distance away from the freeway, and half the circle of people is water. So it's just not an ideal retail site for a large user, and that's why we feel that this is a great use of this property. Finally, we have the current owners here who will speak, and I'm just about done. So this is some points from the letter that they had brought up, and I'll let them speak to it, but they're here to speak about their situation and how they've been working with us over the last year. So finally, we're proposing a conditional rezoning for this property. We feel it meets a lot of the goals and the intent of the master plan. It's our opinion, and we think it's a beneficial land use for the township. We want to be here, and we hope that, you know, this has given you some things to consider in your decision, and, you know, our conditions, we hope, provide you some comfort that you would achieve a great use here at this property. And so we'd ask for any discussion or commentary from you, but that's it for my part. So I will let whoever's speaking from the sellers come up. I believe it's Gary Gendernalek, and I'll put it back on this if you'd like, Gary. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Gary Gendernalek, five-two-four, five-two-six-two-four, Laurel Oak Lane, Chesterfield. I represent the Mancini sisters. They're both here on that side of the room. Their families had this property for more than a hundred years. They, I knew their dad, Ed. I knew their grandmother, because I've lived here all my life. I did give you a letter from August fifth, where I pointed out certain developments that have occurred along the Twenty-Three Mile Road corridor. And I pointed out that we still have a significant vacancy in the Twenty-Three Mile corridor on existing commercial facilities. One item I didn't list as an address, but in the Kroger mall just to the east of this, there's one building that's now empty. There's numerous other buildings along that corridor, and then I showed you two at Twenty-three and Grashett, where there's many empty places. I urge you on behalf of the Mancinis to approve this conditional rezoning request. And I pointed out, by way of example, the Ed Priest Farm at Twenty-one in Grashett, where my clients, the Priest family, sold the farm off for development. It was owned, it was roughly twenty-five acres for commercial use. The buyers were foreclosed on because they didn't pay on the land contract. The last day, they got a buyer to buy the corner piece off. They built the CVS on the corner and the strip mall around it. The rest is returned to mother nature. There was a point in time when Jim Ellis was the supervisor, I represented a client that wanted to build a three-story senior facility there. The planning commission and the township board turned it down. They said, it's good for commercial. Well, the township and the school district missed out on the revenue from that facility for the last fifteen-plus years. Two or three years ago, before the pandemic, another group came for senior housing on that remaining nineteen or twenty acres, and it was approved, but it still hasn't been built. The, I pointed out, on the south side of Twenty-three, just east of I-ninety-four, Anthony Morocco's group owns fifty-plus acres. That was site plan approved, and I represented Rocky Meldrum, who owned the piece to the west, for a super Walmart, even though they had a Walmart at I-ninety-four and M-fifty-nine. That was approved. There was a downturn in the economy in oh-eight, oh-nine, and ten. It never got built. It's growing soybeans. But they've now made a proposal, and it's been going through the process, through the planning commission, to retain some commercial in the front, and then the rest be rezoned to C-one residential. So if the township has given up fifty-plus acres of commercial down there, and this piece is zoned agricultural, and there's significant housing around this piece, because just to the east is the Presbyterian Village, which is basically multifamily, and across the street, there's multifamily and assisted-living facility. And when the north side of Twenty-three at D-W Seaton was developed, there was commercial in the front, and then multifamily, and then single-family. That's the area where I live. When Coach Drive was laid out thirty-plus years ago in Rosemary, they were stubbed to the Mancini Farm with the idea that those stubs would run through and probably somehow intersect with D-W Seaton where the light is. This proposal doesn't invade those neighbors because there's no connection to those two existing streets. The, I also noted on page four that I'm currently involved, with reference to the Rosales, they own twenty-five acres, plus or minus, that's zoned multifamily on the north side of Twenty-three, just east of the Carright dealership. We've executed a purchase agreement. That Camping World is going to buy the property. They're going to petition the township to rezone it for commercial use, so that they can have their camper dealership on that site. So if you change that multifamily to the commercial in conjunction with this proposal, the township, there's a net negative change in commercial and multifamily. The, and they want to be up, Camping World wants to be up by the freeway because of the exposure to the freeway, because the property goes all the way back to I-ninety-four, the exposure at Twenty-three, and it's like their competition is among Clemmons at the River Road and I-ninety-four. So it's in close proximity to one another. It's kind of like the Troy Motor Mall, where all the car dealerships are in close proximity to one another. And when you go at Hall Road, there's many dealerships along Hall Road, in Chesterfield, and in Macomb Township. So I think from a historical perspective, and they made modification to line their entrance, their main entrance, with D-W Seaton where the traffic control light is. And I did want to read a letter that the sisters have put together, addressed to the board, and it reads, "The co-owners of the Mancini Farm located on Twenty-Three Mile Road are the daughters, Deborah and Sandra. We'd like to provide you with some very important reasons why we feel our beloved family farm should be developed by Redwood. The Mancini family owned and operated this farm for almost a hundred years. Our family supported and enhanced the community by providing fresh produce and garden plants for around forty-five years. My dad provided a driving range for twenty-plus years. He provided affordable and free rent for needy community members by renting the farmhouse. My dad loved this community and this land. His vision was to develop the property to provide some form of housing for people in the community. Unfortunately, he knew he could never realize his dream with his advancing age, failing health, and his limited financial resources. He was scanned in a Ponzi scheme by a prior renter's grown child. This created a financial hardship for him in his later years. My dad was born in nineteen-twenty and lived through the Great Depression. He knew the value of a dollar and a kind heart to help those in need. Our dear father passed in two thousand and sixteen, but his legacy lives in my sister and myself. My only siblings, Deborah suffers from advanced multiple sclerosis for forty-five-plus years. Her care is costly and labor-intensive. Her husband, who is here tonight, and Debbie's here, is her primary caregiver, and he needs help. He is seventy-one years old. Myself, Sandra, cared lovingly for both my parents. Our dad passed two thousand and sixteen, and our mom in October of two thousand and twenty. My two sons both suffered, or suffered from life-threatening illnesses, leukemia, and the other with PTSD, unable to work for six years after serving a nine-month tour in Afghanistan for the U.S. Air Force. He was honorably discharged and struggles daily to receive the care he needs and deserves. We, as a family, all maintained and tried to keep the driving range open, but with COVID, this became impossible. We do have a renter in the farmhouse, but he and his family filed for bankruptcy and pay a very minimal amount. We are all beyond retirement age, and our children have jobs and families to support. We love this area, and all of us live in this area. We love our heritage and our community, and we are ready to pass it on to Redwood. The Redwood community is beautiful and will maintain the area and its value. This will fulfill my dear father's dream, and I know he would be proud. Sincerely, Deborah and Sandra." And the debate seems to be commercial versus residential. But in the Free Press, Thursday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, in the business section, one of the headlines reads, "Mall May Become Industrial Complex. Eastland Center Aide For Redevelopment Plan For Industrial Use." That, to me, is a clear indication, and as Emily said, in modern America, more and more people shop online, or even at Kroger's, you can send in a text or an email to them, get your groceries, and you can pull in a designated spot, and they bring them out, and you pay with your credit card. You know, years ago, Kroger's was in the Chesterfield Mall, and before that, it was in a mall on Green Street in New Baltimore. It moved from New Baltimore to the Chesterfield Mall, and then where its current location was built, it was going to be a different grocery store. Kroger's bought that store and moved from that location over to its current location. And that building sat for a while because Kroger's had the wherewithal to pay the rent, and then it became a tractor supply. I've had different commercial groups contact me with reference to commercial things in the area, and one of the things that they always point out is when they do a one, two, three, or four-mile radius, especially at the east end of Twenty-three, that within a mile, you're in the lake, and the fish don't buy any products. So that's why they're inclined not to move to the east end. Because on one occasion, a few years ago, I had conversations with Aldi about moving into where DiMaggio's was, when the DiMaggio's store closed. And they said, Gary, it's too close to the lake. The fish don't buy anything, even though there's a good traffic count, because a lot of people that live to the east of Chesterfield and New Baltimore, and Ira and Clay Township, come this way to go to work. They don't always stop. And so I think, in the big perspective, that this Redwood proposal is good for Chesterfield. It's good for the Mancinis, and it's good for that general area. And with more rooftops in that general area, they will able to assist in continuing to frequent the existing commercial and maybe get some of the vacant places filled. So notwithstanding the planning commission's recommendation, and then I said in my letter, there's probably a little bit of pride in the authorship, because we all know that they put in time and effort, both the members and the planner, and the local planner, Jonathan. But, and the Mancinis had written in the past objecting to this being commercial. It's just too big of a piece, and there is commercial- It's just too big of a piece, and there is commercial to the west because there's two lots, one that they own, one that somebody else has owned, and that the bank owns. And when Citizens had the bank, they were kind to the community. They let the ASO use the back part for soccer, but they always had it for sale, and it's still just growing grass. So I would urge you to, notwithstanding the recommendation from the planning commission because it's just a recommendation, you have to make the independent decision, to grant this conditional rezoning request. And if you had any questions of us, we'd try to answer them. Thank you. And I won't use the boards.
Any further comments from Redwood representatives? Jonathan, you have a few comments to make?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of points of clarification, you know, as far as the planning commission's decision and as it relates to the master plan. The C4 district was referenced, which was accurate as it was referenced, but some things to consider with that is the C4 is our mixed-use district. So that's intended to be an overall design of a whole project, 50 to 100 acres, that incorporates the multifamily into a commercial development. Also, commercial doesn't always equal retail. There certainly are retail trends, I think everybody knows that, but there's more that goes into a commercial district than just retail, as was the applicant from last year on this property. It was a sports complex, so you have that, you have entertainment-type uses, you have, you know, fitness facilities, recreation, different stuff like that, that there's always going to be a need for. You know, obviously, we can make the case over the last year, maybe not so much with COVID, but I don't think that's going to be a permanent thing. One last thing that Gary alluded to that went into the decision-making on that being commercial on that piece of property is that from I-94 through Algonquin, that's the main corridor that those residents will travel. And in the peak time for traffic, they're heading eastbound, which is a right-in, right-out of that property, which, from a planning standpoint, you look at, that's the ideal location for your after-work hours commercial or restaurants. It's the convenience factor. So that's the basis that went into making that decision for commercial. But other than that, I don't have anything else to add unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Director Palin. Comments from the public, from the audience? If you don't mind, step over to the podium, identify yourself, state your name.
Hi, I'm Patricia Schaefer. I've lived on Anders and Coach for 50 years. That is right. My backyard faces that field. As far as being a farming, I've been there 50 years. I have never seen so much as a cornstalk there, but that's beside the point. Ed and I discussed twice a week. I would go to his little hut, and we would talk about politics, whatever. That land was his life. That's where he was raised, that's where his whole heart was in it. I get they want to sell it, and if I owned it, I would too. But my concern is, 50 feet from my fence, I'm going to have six door walls, and then 20 feet away from that, another six door walls? I have maintained, my husband and I, 50 feet from my fence line for 50 years so that I wouldn't have ticks, pickers in my yards, fleas, and mosquitoes. Anybody that wants to ride by will see the 50 feet that this gentleman over here maintains at his property, mine, and the 88-year-old woman that's lived there 50 years also. We have maintained that for 50 years, 50 feet from our fence line. So my question is, how do we, or what does Redwood do so that I'm not standing in my backyard and seeing 12 door walls looking at me 50 feet away? I guess that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the board. Comments from the board? Trustee Joseph?
I have a few questions, if I could, maybe start with Mr. Gendron Alec, one, and then I had a few questions for Ms. Engelhardt. I'll be brief in this question, Gary, because you might be the one guy in the township that talks more than me, but I do enjoy your recitation. I always learn a little bit more about the community when I hear you talk about property and what used to be there, so I do appreciate it. You close your letter to the board, the August 5 letter to the board, with a couple of points. One, notwithstanding the 2020 master plan for this parcel, and you touched on it in your verbal presentation, that you are aware that the planning commission put a ton of energy and effort and pride of authorship, and I agree with you, that could potentially be a burden when it comes to looking at alternatives. But you then say in the closing, "None of the minutes from the planning commission meetings reflect input from the planning members or others as to how to use the 30-acre Mancini farm." In essence, how could it be used in a viable commercial fashion? And I thought that was a very poignant comment because we look at the master plan in terms of the overall good for the community and where we are trying to go. A member of the planning commission for four years prior to this master plan, I've worked alongside a number of the commission members, so it's part of me too. It is a very unique question. You never had feedback on what would be the alternative if not this. So you, in essence, you get, no, this won't work. But one thing that I did hear, and I'm curious your opinion and your client's opinion, had to do with something that Mr. Palin was alluding to, which was the idea of restaurants and a sort of a hybrid commercial, similar to what you see a little bit to the west by the Rain Tree complex, which is a limited commercial on the front end. 23 Mile Road would have, as he mentioned, perhaps some restaurants and some right-hand turning for those headed towards the water, and then Redwood directly behind that. Is there enough space on that parcel to complete a hybrid? And was that something that was ever considered by your clients or Redwood?
Yeah, along that line, we've had discussions between myself and the Redwood group, and A, they're not in the commercial development business. They're in the apartment development business. So they would want, from their perspective, to exclude some of the property from any acquisition from the Mancinis. So like when you look at this area from February of this year, do you mind if I walk over your way?
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. On this area, this is 23 Mile Road. This is the west end. The Mancinis were dead, Ross, and Oldstis, and a different group, Oldstis. And this is an acre property. So if somebody wanted to do commercial, they'd acquire these three pieces. One of the times the problem is that they had some lies coming in, so you can only have your parts out of there. But the problem is, when you go and look at what they submitted and with the modified plan, is that that depth of the pieces that were accepted out is 220 feet. When you look at their plan, if you go, and this is the accepted-out piece, and you bring this line across here at 220, you eliminate all these humans. And if you don't have a certain number of humans, it doesn't make economic sense. And then intertwined with that is, because in the conversation with Leno, the realtor, you might have to have a depth of 300 feet to make it viable for commercial. Because by way of illustration, if you go to Cleveland Township on Garrett Field, that was built all along that ago, like every 800 feet, there's another driveway. And that's not real hot in that type of development. They want the least number of driveways to get it out so that there's not traffic interference. So the deeper you get up to 23, the less units you get around, and it doesn't make the program viable. And I don't disagree with Jonathan that there's other things besides commercial, retail. But if you look at this community and the Jason community, starting at that coming line, there's four or five drugstores. There's at least two McDonald's. There's Popeyes, there's Taco Bell, there's all the other ones that are along there. You're not going to have a third McDonald's. You're not going to have another King Morton and Wendy's down the street, and I recognize those people really told that. So there's so much commercial in that corridor that there's not much, that's why nobody's coming to buy two Michael's pieces at 23 and S.A. Or the earliest piece on the south side of 23, just a piece of S.A., which is like six, seven acres, so commercial, it's got good frontage, it's got an old house in the ground. But there's no becoming to buy those pieces. And they did have a potential buyer that went through the site plan process for a sports complex. But let's say by illustration, that was going to build out around nine or 10 million dollars. The guy was capitalized under a million dollars. So the bank basically told them, which we had no control over, "We're not going to finance your deal because you don't have enough equity in the program to sustain what we think you have to put up front." So in the five years since Ed passed, they've had one potential buyer that walked away because he had the right to walk away because the bank said, "We're not giving you the money." And in most programs of this magnitude of this acreage, people get financing, and if the financing doesn't make sense to the mortgage or bank, you're not going to be able to proceed. And that's just like I said, the camper, they're willing to buy Rosale's piece and go through the rezoning process because it's close to that corridor, it's on the freeway, it's on 23 Mile Road, and they have the frontage and the visibility. Down here, it's just like Ed Prees's piece. 19 acres is not good for commercial, and the board, two, three years ago, plus or minus, approved that senior housing. Because I was here for somebody else the night it was at the planning commission, so I took the podium and gave them some history and said like, you know, when Jim Ellis was the supervisor, you could have approved it, it could have been built, you would have had the tax revenue. But you didn't approve this guy. Tom Callis was the attorney for the developer, and he thanked me for my positive comments. And that's, in the big picture, you know, it's like at Adele in 23, on the north side, there's two vacant pieces right at the intersection. There's the real estate that sits back. They went through a site plan, I think, a few years ago for another office out in front. That never got off the ground. And the piece on the west side at Adele in 23, the people just cut the grass and it's commercial. And I know like years ago, there was a funeral home that was interested in buying it, but they owned it for a long time, and they never did anything with it. So that's why I think this type of development for this piece on the river there preserves the riverbank and that access, and it makes a nice place for those people to live. And it's not going to, you know, when you live next to a vacant piece that somebody's farm, and it's nice to look at it, but if you don't own it, you don't have total control. And when I was in law school, our property professor said, "If you don't own it, you have nominal control of what goes there." And if I lived on Coach or Rosemary, would I rather have one-story apartments or this sports complex? I think the sports complex would have been more invasive of their privacy and noise generation and things of that nature. And there's probably enough land area to do appropriate...
Mr. Gendron Alec, you've answered my question in spades. I'm good. You've answered my question, I'm good. Mr. Supervisor, I think we're going to have continued debate on this, and there's a number of questions, and I know others, but we are currently in a consideration phase, and I would like to continue the debate under a motion, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional rezoning of parcel 0923101-007 from A1 Agriculture to RM1 Multiple Family Residential.
I'll support that.
The motion by trustee Joseph to approve the conditional rezoning, supported by Treasurer Elliott, trustee Vosberg?
And not to monopolize the conversation, but if I could just point out, I had a couple of questions for Ms. Engelhardt that I really don't need answered. I just want to throw out the reason for the support and allow others to speak on this. Having been part of the master plan for a number of years, I know the blood, sweat, and tears that go into that document, and it is not ever, in my mind, a written-in-stone document, that there are elements of the master plan that I think the petitioner threw their presentation when we first took this issue up, and even before, when they presented, when Redwood presented to us initially. If you didn't walk away from that presentation knowing that Redwood was very special in terms of the neighborhood that they create, then you missed something. Because that was really the spirit of their presentation, and I think it very, very closely matched all of the discussions that we had in the development of the master plan. But specific to this parcel and the planner's comments, has the evidence, has the applicant provided evidence that the property cannot be developed or used as zoned? I think they've made a substantial dent in what those options are. I think they've done a very effective job of demonstrating that this is, this is a very difficult piece to develop in the way that it is currently zoned. Is it compatible with surrounding uses? I think undoubtedly it is. Very clearly, there are a number of issues that neighboring communities and residents have, but they're easily mitigated, as we saw in the presentation regarding the Macomb project. Would it place a burden on nearby thoroughfares? If so, how would the burden compare to the existing zoning? I think Mr. Gendron Alec nailed that one as well. All of the commercial applications increase traffic at a greater density than this proposed site, and the inclusion of the second entry mitigates a lot of those problems that you get involved with deceleration when people are turning in. Is there other land currently available for this use? Yes, the master plan talks about 158 acres, but a number of those acres are unavailable or wetlands. They cannot be developed in the same way that Redwood is talking about this piece. Will the development of the site proposed be able to meet zoning requires? And I believe that it will in general. Is the rezoning the best way, or could the existing zoning district be amended? The very first question I asked for Mr. Gendron Alec is, what would a hybrid model look like? Because I was interested in seeing, could we make some modifications? And the answer is no, that the project in essence does not remain viable if you strip the front north-facing portion and designated commercial. It won't leave enough units to really make the Redwood project happen. Has there been a change in circumstances and conditions? And our planner notes that this master plan was just developed so that there are none, but I would argue that COVID changed that dramatically for us, and it gave us a lot of indications about what our future looks like in terms of commercial and residential and retail. So I would argue that we have substantially changed with no ability to predict, just like the rest of the world. And would granting the request create an unplanned spot zone? I think anybody that knows the Mancini family knows what a real treasure they are to our community. I think even the neighbor that spent time with Mr. Mancini would acknowledge what a great individual he was and the legacy that he left. And I'm not proposing that we rezon this because of the benefit of a single property owner, but a property owner that has been so committed to our community and then to pass his legacy onto a development like Redwood, which anybody who researches Redwood and you see what they do in neighboring communities, is a phenomenal organization. They really have tremendous satisfaction, not only from their tenants, but also the surrounding businesses that they reside in. It's a wonderful presentation that we got tonight and previously. And I also appreciated very much, Ms. Engelhardt, your inclusion in a very respectful way, the opinion of an outside planner who took no issue with Mr. Arroyo or our planning team and simply pointed out areas where this development is actually in concert with our own master plan. It didn't say that we were wrong, it just simply said that there are elements of our master plan that are met with the Redwood development. And then you got confirmation from the commercial and the idea of a big box... and the idea of a big box being detrimental to one of the key concepts in the existing master plan, which is this idea of a hamlet community. And if anybody remembers the presentation that we had about what a hamlet community looks like, a commercial development on that site actually creates a sprawl that, that, that does damage to that concept. So in total, I see this Redwood proposed development and the rezoning proposal as being in very much the spirit of the master plan, although it may lack some areas where the letter is not followed to a T. I think that there are some real strong elements of why this rezoning makes sense and is a very good fit for our community. And I, and I thank you for having the patience to come back and present another option for us because Redwood is certainly something that our township needs. And I, and I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, trustee Joseph. Trustee Bosberg.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I supported this because I, I believe it seems like a, a good use for the property, the proposal does. I do have some questions about, I think of our attorney perhaps, or Jonathan. What, by doing this, what, what would happen next? I know the petitioner had said they still have to have site approval, things like that. Could you explain the next steps?
As, as the, as the applicants representative indicated, this is what's considered a conditional rezoning, which means that, you know, the, the applicant has requested to rezone the property from ag to residential multiple. But there are other uses in the residential multiple and, and there's, there's standards in our zoning ordinance that may allow them to do a configuration that maybe is more intense than they're proposing. So years ago, they amended the, the state law dealing with the township's ability to, to zone. And they said, if the applicant comes in, they can limit themselves. And they can come to the township and they can say, look, if you rezone this, we will limit our ability to develop the site in the following manner. And the, the way that they implement that is through what's called a conditional rezoning agreement. And you'll see in your packet, there is an agreement that was prepared by counsel for Redwood that on the second or third page, you will see specific conditions. And there are nine or 10 or 11 conditions that specifically limit the use to which they can put the property, the size of the buildings, things of that nature. And some of those were put on the screen during the presentation by Redwood. So they are locking themselves in. There's also attached to the, to the rezoning agreement, a conceptual plan. And it was put up on the, on the screen today. That is not to, to supplant the site plan. If you were to approve this tonight, you will have rezoned the property. You will have approved the conditional rezoning agreement. And what they take away tonight is they've got a rezoning. They're locked into what's in that agreement. And then the next step is they got to go back to the planning commission again. And they've got to submit a detailed site plan that is consistent with the development plan that's attached to the agreement. And they are limited by all of the conditions that they've laid out in that agreement. That agreement gets recorded on the property and will bind the land. So that if, you know, six months after this goes through, Redwood finds somebody that comes in and wants to buy it, that buyer's locked into exactly the deal that they made tonight with the board. So they're not done. They, they're over one big hurdle, but they've still got to go back and get planning commission approval on the site plan and have to satisfy all the zoning ordinance requirements for site plan approval. And then once the site plan's approved, then they've got to get engineering approval and they build it like any other development.
My second question you just answered. If they chose to not complete the project or sell to someone else, whatever we, whatever that decision is, this conditional goes on to the next owner.
We approve it tonight. We execute, the supervisor will sign the conditional rezoning agreement with the applicant. It will be recorded with the Macomb County Register of Deeds and it will bind the land.
Thank you. Did you want anything, Jonathan?
Bob pretty much nailed it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Treasurer Elliott.
Want to address a couple of the comments made. So somebody came up and spoke about being on Coach Drive. So is that, is that true? It's 50 feet from the, these buildings are 50 feet from the, the other residents there?
Again, that's all going to come down to the site plan approval process. I think there was some buffer built into the conditions, but until there's a site, a formal site plan approval, it's hard to say.
Okay. Is there something normally, like some sort of natural barrier that's put up sometimes? Is that one of the solutions?
The way that our ordinance is structured, there, there's a use that is protected and a use that screens. Typically, it's more designed for, you know, residential to commercial or residential to industrial. For residential to residential, there's not. If the developer decides, sometimes they will, they want to provide it. There's berms, there's landscaping, there's different options that can be done.
Another question I had when I was looking at the, the map. So the, the fronts of the, and I think this was Emily referred to this in her presentation. So the fronts of these homes will be facing 23 Mile? Is that, or the backs, the backs of them? Okay. And is there some sort of natural barrier, berm or something that is there for the, along 23 Mile, those as well? Or is that in the plan now or no?
Again, that would come down to the site plan process, but I, I would think that they would want to do a barrier. It's pretty typical. I know in, in our single-family developments, we require landscape easement on the frontage. I'd have to reference the ordinance to find out for the multifamily development. But it's something that, I know it's something the planning commission would be interested and would try to work out with them.
Another question. Emily referenced Salt River and so did the attorney, Mr. Gendron Alec. In reference to that, who's responsible for clearing that? Or, or maintaining it? Is there anybody that's responsible? Because there was a reference to Salt River and also that there would be a, it says, Mr. Gendron Alec said, and it would, this plan would reserve river access. So how would that?
I don't know if they've done any research on that. The river's typically under state control and permitting is done through them. But I don't know if they've had any conversations about that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Treasurer Elliott. Any further comments from the board? No comments? I have a motion by trustee Joseph to approve a conditional rezoning of property parcel number 09-23-101-007 from A18 to agricultural to RM1 Multiple Family Residential. Clerk Barry.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Bosberg.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
No.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Thank you. Item 9B.
Item 9B is a recommendation to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 192 Land Division Regulations. Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 192 Land Division Regulations.
I'll support that motion. I'll support that motion. Discussion.
I have a question. At the first reading, there were several comments that were made from members of the audience, even maybe members here on the board. Were any of those comments or ideas incorporated in this? Or is this the same reading as the first?
Uh-uh, I'll defer to.
Yeah, it, it is exact. It's, it's exactly the same ordinance. I assume you have Chris Anderson's letter.
Right.
Yeah. So it is exactly the same draft they had before.
I just wanted to.
Yes.
Let people know that. Thank you.
You got your rezoning. Are you calling me out on a typo, no? Come on, come on, Garrett, you're done.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the floor? I knew you were too close. I should have waited until you sat down. Any comments from the public? I have a motion from clerk Barry to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 192, supported by supervisor Kirsten. Clerk Barry.
Clerk Barry, aye. Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Bosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Item 9C.
Item 9C is to approve the Finance Department's request for the 2021 budget amendments.
All right, so this agenda item is the mid-year 2000. Sorry.
Do I have a motion to support the item 9C, approval of the Finance Department request for 2021 budget amendments?
So moved.
I'll support. Treasurer.
Okay, so this agenda item is the mid-year 2021 budget amendments. Just to give a brief procedural overview, throughout the year, the department heads submit their individual requests for amendment and are compiled for a twice-a-year group budget amendment. The amendment list and detailed account analysis was emailed out on July 20th to the board and the department heads for advance review. I always get feedback on how this is helpful because it gives everybody a chance to get their questions answered and review it thoroughly. This amendment is on the smaller side with 17 accounts being adjusted. The largest amendment is in account 101 466 970 000. Of that amendment, $221,139 is for the Jefferson Avenue pathway that we approved prior. And $208,779 for the Edgewater SAD. It's important to note that that SAD is a future reimbursable expense. So I'm not sure if anybody has any further questions or wants to talk about anything.
Discussion from the board? No discussion from the board. I have a motion to approve the Finance Department's request.
No.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lefata, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Supervisor Kirsten. We're seven months complete into the 2021 budget. If I'm not mistaken, that budget amendment's somewhere around $548,000 increase from, for this year. If you go to look at the Charter Township Act of, Act 359 of 1947, it says that unless there's a township superintendent appointed, that the responsibility of the township supervisors to prepare, administer the annual budget under the policies formulated on the township board and keep said board fully advised at all times to the financial conditions and needs of the township. Well, I've got a problem with this because one of the issues in the increase in there is the Jefferson pathway, that I know there was $200,000 that was approved for it. And nobody ever came to the board prior to this to say, we had another $200,000 expenditure or there was an expenditure to this amount to have to amend the budget. There, there, at some point in time, there's got to be some kind of, you know, responsibility and accountability for how township dollars are spent. And in the private sector, when you get a budget, that budget's frozen. You don't do what you call a budget amendment. What you do is if you really need something, then you're going to take and make a sacrifice in some other area to pay for what is absolutely needed. So in the public sector, I guess, you know, it's kind of willy-willy, goosey-goosey because all we keep doing is drawing funds out of the general fund and we don't, we're not responsible and we're not accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefata. Any further comments from the public?
John Speaker, 53978 Connor Drive. Just a quick comment to that. I know Vicky Bauer had said that there's 17 amendments to the budget. Can we get a total money of those 17 amendments on what we're taking out of the general fund? And like Treasurer Lefata said, in the private sector, with 17 amendments and any business, I mean, you know, and I feel bad for the new supervisor, Kirsten, because you inherited a huge problem here from the former supervisor, Mr. Akavetti. But in the private sector, most people would have been fired with 17 amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Any further comments from the board or from the public? Bring it back up to the board. Discussion. Trustee Joseph.
Just a, just a quick comment. I think I really didn't have a lot to say. This, these amendments were issues that, that were discussed on the board. I think the speakers hit the nail on the head. There's a number of issues that we're going to have to keep paying for, Mr. Supervisor. This is, this is just unfortunately what you've inherited. There's, there's not much to do with the past. This now is just a budget amendment that sets the accounting portion of this right. The accounting piece of this, I believe, is proper. It is what we said we would do twice a year when we had budget amendments. We can debate about the individual amendments and the need for them and who did what, but this is simply an accounting procedure, as I understand it. We're not approving anything. We're not really debating any of the expenditures. This is just what we laid out as the appropriate mechanism to keep your book straight, Ms. Bauer. As the Finance Director, they bring it forward as we talked about twice a year. And then it's, it's a, it's a, it's an amendment of the issues that were deliberated on by the board, you know, previous to the amendment request. So this is a, this is a financial transaction and an accounting transaction, as I understand it.
That's correct.
Thank you, trustee Joseph. Any further comments? From board? I have a motion by clerk Barry, supported by supervisor Kirsten, to approve the Finance Department's request for 2021 budget amendments. Clerk Barry.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trust, Treasury, excuse me. Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Bosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Item 9D.
Item 9D is to approve a recommendation by Public Works to participate in the cost-share agreement with the Macomb County Department of Roads to improve the intersection of 26 Mile and County Line Road at an estimated cost of $103,470 from GL number 101 446 970 000. Accompanying this item is a request to approve a budget amendment to GL number 101 446 970 000, increasing the budget from $156,915 to $260,385.
I'll make a motion to support this project and enter into the cost-share agreement with Macomb County Department of Roads to improve the intersection of 26 Mile Road and County Line at the estimated numbers that have been provided.
Second.
Director Johnson.
Yes, good evening, board. I know this agenda item was tabled to the 24th, but we were able, one, to get the information compiled sooner than that. And then also, we had the ability to have Eric Dimoff and Scott Wannagat from the county to be able to be present tonight. So we figured we would bring it to tonight's meeting. That way, if you guys have questions for them, you have the ability to ask them questions. Before, before we get to that point, I'd like to bring up a few comments regarding this project. So this, this wasn't actually two projects, it was one project, but two phases. The first phase being the signal upgrades, which again, as we mentioned, the last meeting was 100% funded at the county level with 75% of the costs being subsidized by Macomb County Department of Roads and 25% by the St. Clair County Road Commission. And that agreement was signed by both parties on June 20th of 2019, which should be in the agenda. 20th of 2019, which should be in the agenda. Phase two was to add the turn lane to the intersection to allow for the better flow of traffic. The addition of the, the addition of the turn lanes will align, will align all the lanes to the new signals that are being installed. Our portion of the, of the project is estimated currently at $103,470, which is roughly 15% of the project cost. We have found no documentation on, on the townships end showing an agreement between the Department of Roads and Chesterfield Township at this point in time, hence the cost-share agreement that's gonna be in front of us. And then Lennox Township has, they just received their cost-share agreement, I believe it was last week, and they're actually having a special board meeting tomorrow, I believe it was at 2:30 PM, to go over their cost-share agreement. And I believe I was told they were here tonight as well to listen in, just like, or either they're online listening or watching to see what's going on here. So this upgrade will obviously benefit the township and the residents, improve safety measures at that intersection. I know one of the, the big talking points that DPW, we talked about in speaking with Supervisor Kirsten, Clerk Barry, and Treasurer Elliott, we're just making sure we can improve the communication with Department of Roads on projects ongoing in the, in the township in future years, so we can budget and plan for these projects, rather than be, you know, kinda, I don't wanna say caught off guard, but this is kind of an anomaly situation. But just making sure we got better communication going forward between the, the Department of Roads and us, so that we can make sure you guys understand that we're budgeting for these things, that we're not just adding it to our already existing budget. And then as you can see, and I'm sure you can speak with Mr. Seibert, but he, our attorney Seibert, but he did, he did mention in his letter, that's also included in the agenda, that the township has no legal obligation to execute the cost-share agreement. It is totally at your discretion, but I'll, obviously I want to speak for him, so feel free to ask him questions. That is the information and the facts I've compiled for this project. Again, Eric and Scott are here if you guys have questions for them, and obviously Attorney Seibert's here as well for questions on his letter.
Eric, I can see you're excited. Trustee Joseph?
Yeah, Mr. Johnson, I appreciate your presentation tonight. Respectfully, the documents that were provided by the county to the township in June of 2019 put us on notice that there was a problem at that intersection that involved traffic signals and roadway enhancements. They spelled it out in their letter, and there was no representation back to this board from the individual who signed that agreement. This idea that we needed to go forward and sit down and sign off on free traffic signals is really not, it, it's, and I appreciate all of the correspondence among the board for looking at ways to improve our communication with the county. But the reality is, is when the leader of the community sits down with the county and the neighboring community, and they talk about a project that's going to be several hundred thousand dollars, and then the person who's in the room doesn't come back and talk to the board, how do we then say to the county, "Hey, you gotta do a better job of explaining your vision over the next five, 10, 20 years"? Their budget is deeply impacted by what's approved by the state and what they can do with their revenue, and so they can have an idea, but when they sit down, they sit down at the table and they say, "This intersection's a problem, and all of the communities that border this intersection know that there have been fatalities and accidents, and we think we could enhance this with some signaling and some lane changes and some areas like that. What do you guys think?" And four communities sign saying, "That's a great idea." Two years later, you come back and we go, "Oh, we didn't, we don't, we're not obligated to pay anything." Well, that may be true in that we don't have a, a signed contract that lays out exactly, but the idea that somehow we were blindsided by it, we had a guy in the room, he signed his name on the contract, on the, on the joint agreement, and I don't know who on this board knew, but I didn't, and I've talked to several others, we, we didn't have, have any idea. And it's just another, you know, punch in the stomach. New supervisor comes in, and we got a project that, that's going on, and we're 100,000 into a project, and oh, that somehow the county blew it. The county didn't blow it. I don't think the county blew it at all. I think we had an individual in the room, they laid out a plan, and then that person did nothing with it. Nothing at all with it. And so I appreciate the county even coming in tonight and trying to answer any questions and looking to shoulder some of this, but they don't have any obligation to that at all. I know, I know how we got here. We heard other speakers talk about it. It's just another, what I think will be a long string of Easter eggs for the new supervisor to discover, and they're hundreds of thousands of dollars, and this is another one. This one saves lives, and it would be, I think, grossly negligent of our board to not enter into this project because it has been thoroughly vetted and researched and is desperately needed at that intersection. But how we got here really stinks, and in terms of fix, fixing it and moving forward, I'm all for the project, and it's something that we should do, and, and amending the budget is smart. We'll do it at the same time if it's approved. So thanks for bringing it forward. Thanks for researching it. I take some issue with your very diplomatic presentation. I have a different take on how we got here, but we, we can respectfully disagree on that. Thanks.
Trustee Anderson?
I want to thank Trustee Joseph. You hit it right on the head. I know that we got a question of lives at that intersection. That's why, whatever, whatever we feel about how we got here, it, it stinks, but I think we have to support it on, for the matter of the lives involved and the traffic involved and whatever. But thank you, Trustee Joseph.
Trustee Vosberg?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I support the changes being made at the intersection for all the reasons already stated, specifically, you know, the safety of, of the residents and the people that drive through there. I would like to hear from the Department of Roads as to how we got here, how, why we didn't get the, the cost-share agreement in a more timely fashion, please.
Hi, Eric Demoff, Macomb County Department of Roads. So during the time that this, we received the initial request from the four communities, we had a transition in our department. I believe there was a lag of communication that occurred. Moving forward, we will ensure that communication will continue to take place regularly with DPW and this board to ensure that there's no surprises in the future. We meet regularly with the 27 communities within Macomb County to ensure planning for future projects moves forward in a timely fashion as well. And, you know, just doing so, we want to just reiterate that we're your partners in this thing. And, you know, just kinda second his sentiment, you know, how we got here, it isn't neither here nor there, but we're here to, you know, correct communications moving forward to ensure that there's timely communications with you guys moving forward.
Alright, thank you. Things that I had read, and welcome Supervisor Reader from Lennox Township, things that I had read, I thought was related to the Department of Roads with, with the change of, somebody had retired, the person that normally would-
Correct.
-would watch that. So it, it, it wasn't just Chesterfield that got amended, Lennox Township as well?
Yes, Lennox, Lennox's was amended as well. They had some change over there as well, so there's probably some miscommunication on both sides of what happened there. So, like I said, we're gonna continue to communicate with you guys and DPW moving forward for planning 22 and beyond.
Thank you.
Yep.
And this is, you don't have to answer this or address this, but I would like, address it other than, I would like it brought back to, to your department and the director. And that is that I would really like to, I already talked to Supervisor Kirsten about this, I really would like to see more transparency in terms of what the Department of Roads plans to do for each community, and specifically Chesterfield, the roads that, for which you are in charge of, what the plans are for a five, 10, 15, 20-year plan. And I'm not just talking about the, the plans for, you know, additional funding, like through the SEMCOGS, you know, through all the regional plan. It's just regular maintenance, things like that. And when you anticipate there might be another time that we would like to do a certain project, but we know we, that we, as in the Department of Roads, will know that you don't have the money, and you're gonna seek or ask if we would like to participate. I, I just think it would be very helpful for us when we plan our budgets, because when these projects come up, it's always, almost always, an additional cost that we had not anticipated. And I really, I think it would be helpful to all of us if we could plan better together. Thank you.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. What, what date will this project start if this goes through?
Good evening, Scott, Scott Wannagat, County Highway Engineer. We have currently bid the project out, and we have a contractor on board. So we've been holding off starting the project until we settle these cost-share agreement issues that we have. But we're ready to, to get this started sometime this month.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you, Kevin, for a great presentation and doing it while you're on your vacation week, and for coming in, and that was great dedication. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Comments from the public?
Thank you Supervisor Kirsten. There was a comment made in the packet that the county notified Supervisor Akavetti again in May of 2021, 2021. Going back to the Charter Township Act, it says that the supervisor's responsibility is to keep board members fully advised at all times of any financial conditions or financial needs of the township. It looks like we're taking this and we're kinda twisting it and kinda blaming the county a little bit for not enough communication, when we're back to responsibilities and accountability within our own house. And the other thing is, we're into another budget amendment that I didn't see in the previous budget amendments, so I guess we're in for another $103,000 going the other way. There's, there's two issues here. One is civil obedience, which means that our supervisor didn't follow through and carry out the letter of law. And then there's a moral obligation. There's accidents, there's been a death. Though it's not perfect, I would not blame the board for approving that $103,000, because it would be one of the things, one of the primary things that a township elected official is to consider the safety of the residents. That's the primary responsibility. And $103,000 for the safety of the residents would be a much better investment than providing a shelter for fish. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public?
John Speaker, 53978 Conner Drive. Trustee Joseph, Trustee Joseph mentioned, you know, an individual on the board, how we got here. Well, I'm gonna tell you how we got here. We got here because of the former Supervisor Akavetti. And we got in this position because he was ego-driven, and his ego was bigger than anything, and it was all about him. So for an individual to authorize $103,470 and put his signature on a signed contract and not report back to the board, I don't know how anybody on this board could be okay with this. I mean, it's not okay with me. I'm a resident, that's my tax money, along with everyone else's tax money. But he didn't even have the decency to report back to you guys on what he was doing. And he's got a legal responsibility, like Treasurer Lefata said, to report back to you. So just think about that. What he did up here was a complete disservice to each and every one of yous, plus us, the residents. And thank God he's gone. Thank you.
Any further comments from the public? I'll bring it back up to the board. Just a few comments from myself. There was no signed contract. This was a proposal that was submitted. There was no agreement. The board, it was never presented to the board. The township did not enter, enter into a contract with the Macomb County Road Commission on this project. So I just want to make sure that that is clear. That being said, there's a motion by- Trustee Joseph?
I'm just looking for the, for the, the, the document that was signed was in November of 19. As you indicated, this was not a contract. There was never a contract where a cost-share agreement was laid out with, with, with numbers. That is what's before us tonight. There was never a contract involving dollar amount. The distinction with slight difference is that in November, on November 26th of 2019, the municipalities that were involved at that time, Ira, Chesterfield, Casco, and Lennox, sent representatives to meet with the Director of Roads. Those were Brian Santo and Kurt Weston from St. Clair County. In the document that I was referencing, which was not a cost-share contract or an agreement, the distinction between just signalization and the road improvements that we're now being asked to approve tonight, I think are laid out. We request that the improvements include both physical improvements and signalization. So our representative did sign that document, and then nobody on this board was aware. So I appreciate our friends at the county saying, "We're not here to point fingers. We'll shoulder some of it," because we had some turnover. But in the presentation from, from the county, the, the other communities are doing the same, or Mr. Johnson pointed out, Lennox is sort of watching what we do, and they're doing the same. But what some of these other communities did is they went back to their board, the representatives that signed this document went back to their board and said, "This project is moving forward, and this is the total of what we know so far." So there, there was at least a discussion about the document that was signed, and in that transaction, we would've been given a real layout of what perhaps Mr. Johnson could've gone forward at that point and said, "What should we budget? What, what should we budget for the 2021 budget?" See, that, that's the process that would've, would have resulted, and, and prior to COVID, you probably would've done this project last year, because you started it in 19. You were aware of the problem in 19. So we could have budgeted it if the individual that signed the document on behalf of the township came back to the board. But to your point, Supervisor Kirsten and Speaker, there was no contract signed by anybody, which is why the attorney, Mr. Seibert, I think appropriately says, "We're not obligated to..." This is a fresh look at the costs, but we're talking about something different here, which is now, I think, moving forward. And I appreciate the representatives from the county and the diplomatic presentation that you made tonight. So, thank you.
There's a motion by Supervisor Kirsten, supported by Clerk Barry. Approve a recommendation by Public Works to participate in a cost-share agreement with Macomb County Department of Roads to improve the intersection of 26-Mile Road and County Line. Clerk Barry?
Supervisor Kirsten?
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Joseph?
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg?
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item 9E?
Item 9E is to approve a recommendation by the Leisure Services Department to authorize Supervisor Kirsten to execute the 2022 SMART contracts and adopt Resolution Number 2021-23, Authorization to Purchase Community Transit Services from the Richmond Lennox EMS with SMART municipal credits and community credits that will allow Chesterfield Township to continue its partnership with SMART.
Do I have a motion to support?
So moved. Support.
Trustee Vosberg, Treasurer Elliott. Director Bowers?
This request we have here tonight, it's very routine. It's a renewal of the SMART contracts that the Township Board reviews annually. These are credits determined by SMART yearly and awarded to their communities. These contracts allow SMART, on behalf of the Township, to pay Richmond Lennox EMS direct for their services. No money exchanges hand from the Township. The Township documents use of the credits for senior transportation services. For chartered services, the Township pays the chartered bus company for the trip services, documents the expense, and submits a reimbursement request to SMART. SMART then sends a check to the Township for the busing expenses, and this happens for both senior and recreation chartered trips. We have Fred Barbret from SMART here tonight, and Jeff White from Richmond Lennox EMS. They're willing to give a brief presentation and just explain a little bit more about the program.
Good evening. I am Jeff White with Richmond Lennox EMS. We're your township neighbors that provide emergency medical service north of 26 Mile Road and, and through Lennox and Richmond area, and we provide your service for small buses here in Chesterfield Township to your seniors disabled and community residents, as well as working with your leisure services with recreational and other senior-related trips. Like everyone, the pandemic changed our operations somewhat since, since the last time I was before this board. Prior to the pandemic, we had been providing about 4,000 rides per year here in Chesterfield Township. During the pandemic period, that number dropped to about 2,200 rides per year. That didn't mean that we took any vehicles off the road. It means we just operated them with fewer people in them. We focused on essential types of services, and we ensured that there weren't as many people crowded onto a small bus where we might have inadvertently spread, spread the virus during the, during the more significant pandemic periods. We were also able to do something that I was very proud of during the pandemic period, and that was we worked with our partners at SMART and were able to actually use buses to shuttle people in for vaccinations, and we were able to partner with the folks at SMART who are very good at scheduling. That's what they do every day, is schedule rides for people, and in fact, instead of scheduling rides, scheduling vaccines for, for folks to get at our building on 32 Mile Road where we house the community's small bus fleet. During that time period, we were able to provide 16,000 vaccines to northern Macomb County residents, so we were very pleased with, with our local number, and I know a number of those came out of Chesterfield Township and parts north. I can report tonight, I'm very pleased that transit is back to, to full service, both essential and non-essential trips. We're back to doing something we had started just before the pandemic, which is providing transportation down to Detroit Metropolitan Airport for our residents, and we're back to providing service to local recreation departments for larger group-type trips and activities. I always take a minute when I'm at the microphone because it's one of the confusions that I think everybody has these days about when to mask and when not to mask. For public transportation, we are no different than an airplane, if you will. We are, we are funded partially by federal transit dollars, and as such as a public transportation organization, masks have to be worn on our buses. We do keep masks available for residents who just might not be aware because frankly, it seems like the advice on that tends to vary or be all over the board. The, one of the other things that we were able to work on during the pandemic is where we'd make future improvements to service going forward, and during the pandemic, we were able to plan for and purchase a larger bus that will be available to your community, we hope, in about October or November. Some of that's based on some manufacturing delays that we're going through right now that'll be available for really a lot of your community recreational trips. It'll hold considerably more people for some of the more local events, probably not a vehicle you want to take on an hours-long trip because it still is more school bus in nature, I call it, than a charter bus, but certainly for local trips that you might want to put, you know, 20 or, or 24 people on, it'll be a bus that your Leisure Services Department will be able to do that with. The cost of that vehicle will be about $140,000, and like I say, we should have it by October or November and available to serve your community. Basically, just real briefly, the, your local transit service operates on Monday through Friday between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and on Saturday, right now, we're operating from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, but we extend that very often as needed for folks. We just don't get as many requests for service after about 1 o'clock on Saturday, but certainly if we can find those requests, we will, we will put the resources on the road and take care of those residents. The phone number for, for service in, in all of our area is a toll-free number. It's 844-666-5652. And then the last pitch I'd like to make again while I'm here, and I know your, your meetings get broadcast out to your community, is like all service organizations right now, one of our biggest challenges, challenges coming out of the pandemic is and has been, in fact, finding drivers. And, and so I don't think we're unlike a lot of other service organizations at, at this point in time, and so I simply want to say we are looking for people both full and part-time to operate, to actually operate our small buses, and we would encourage anyone interested to contact our office if they are in looking for either full or part-time employment. With that, I don't know if, I believe Fred Barbret from SMART may want to make just a couple of comments.
Thanks, Jeff. Just a couple of things, I'll be really brief. As Jeff said, I'm Fred Barbret, I'm the Ombudsman for SMART in Macomb County, and the partnership between SMART, Chesterfield, and Richmond Lennox EMS is well over a decade, close to two decades old, so there's a lot of new faces, and so appreciate trustee Elliott, Supervisor Kirsten, Steve DeShane, my friend from way, way back, and then Amanda from Leisure Services for having a meeting with us to kind of get everybody up to speed, so thank you to all of you for meeting with us. The second thing is Brad, you and I have had interactions many times over the years, and I look forward to working with you in the future, so congratulations on your appointment. I think it's well deserved, and I, like I said, look forward to working with you. And the last thing is, I know there's the Fire Open House on October 10th, I think it is, and we're going to bring a couple of vehicles out to help chauffeur people for that event between, I think it's Troy Tube and Fire Station 1, so we'll be here for that, so. But if anybody has questions, I'm here to, happy to answer them, so.
Thank you. Bring it up to the board, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I have a motion by Trustee Vosberg, seconded by Treasurer Elliott, to approve the recommendation of Leisure Services Department to authorize Supervisor Kirsten to execute agreement for the 2022 SMART contracts and adopt Resolution 2021-23. Clerk Barry?
Trustee Vosberg?
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Trustee Joseph?
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten?
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Fred. Appreciate it. Thank you. You too, Amanda.
Item F.
Item 9F is to approve a recommendation by Facilities and Operations Department to replace the ADA ramp and deck at the Weller School in the Historical Village for an amount not to exceed $19,706.32 from GL number 101265970000.
So moved. Motion by Trustee Anderson?
Support.
Seconded by Clerk Barry.
Good evening, thank you. The Facility and Operations Department continues to work closely with the Historic Society to complete improvements in the Township Historical Village. The most recent improvement was the reconstruction and installation of the bell tower. The current request is to remove and construct and reconstruct the deteriorating ramp at the Weller Schoolhouse and make it ADA compliant. There is photos, I believe, in your packet that show some of the issues that we're dealing with. Safety is the biggest concern. Estimates were collected in three areas, the ADA ramp, lumber for the deck, lumber to construct the deck, and there's also a breakdown of that in your package. The new deck will include new posts, understructure, joists, decking, stairs, and a railing. It will be constructed and installed by a licensed building company. There's an attached sketch included also in your packet. The ramp will be constructed of ADA improved material. You'll see in that drawing, we went with, instead of going with a wood ramp, which we currently have now, which is prone to failure, especially being outside, we opted to simplify things and go with an aluminum ramp, just so maintenance-wise, we won't have any issues. So that's in your packet as well. What we tried to do is instead of getting a GC to do all the task at once, we kind of broke them up individually and kind of put parts and pieces together, so we got the best bang for our buck here in the township. We will be working, we do have some potential volunteers that are going to help out with some of the work, but if not, we estimated the in-house labor, four days, three workers, at approximately about $2,800 in internal labor if we don't get some of those, which will be above and beyond the cost shown in your packet, if we don't get some of the volunteers that we're anticipating. You'll notice in that packet as well, one of the biggest things I'd like to point out is obviously everybody's aware of the lumber market, so when we got those prices, it was back in early June, and you can see that, I mean, if you take a deeper dive, back then, I believe, a two-by, womanized two-by-10, 10 footer was like $34, now it's down to $20. So some of the biggest numbers you have in there are lumber in that package, and when we go to purchase that material, I can tell you that it's going to be way under the estimated amount. It's just, we didn't know at the time because things were going up and down, we had it on the side of caution to keep those numbers where they were at, but I can tell you it's dropped significantly, almost back to the 2018 numbers, which is good news for everybody that's doing anything around their house.
Thank you, Josh. Bring it up to the board. Discussions? Trustee Joseph?
You forgot to remind me. The question that I have is, and I appreciate you including it in the verbal presentation, there's always a cost associated with our people, and this idea that, you know, we get a better bang for the buck, we have an agenda item where we're going to talk about more contracting out of work that your department normally does, and this is not free. This is, this is people being taken off one job to do another job. Why, why not the, the FNO department, in essence, access the general contractor, so you're bringing in different vendors for different tasks, you're laying out lumber orders and purchasing and handling the general contractor duties? Why don't we, why don't we ever get a bid for what it would cost to just put, the Historical Society has a need. We, we need to put this ramp in, it's not safe, the pictures clearly demonstrate that. Why don't we get a cost of what it, what it costs to, to have that put in so that the board can, can look at that, and then we seem to undervalue our own employees when we say like this, it's sort of in-house work, therefore we get more bang for our buck? How do we know that? How do we know we get more bang for our buck? We, and again, I think the, the process, and maybe this is something for Supervisor Kirsten, we have a deputy supervisor, and in terms of the process, can we, can we fold into these projects a review and a requirement that had come to the board with all of these numbers that we keep asking for, at least I keep asking for, instead of a piecemeal? Like $2,800 is the estimated if we get volunteers, but like, compare apples to apples. So you call a contractor in or you get bids for a ramp, a weller, this is where we want to replace wood with aluminum, it's, it's not a, it's not a complicated bid request or, or estimate request. We compare that with what we have available in the work, you know, man-hours, and I would imagine that the township needs change. We hear things like weather can impact the ability to get out and do certain projects, do we get backed up if it rains? Do we even have the manpower to commit to this project without taking away from some other? And then during the presentation, we talk about bang for our buck and that we're saving money. Ways and means do this, deputy supervisor do this? I don't know what oversight needs to happen, but when these projects come to the board like this, it would be nice if we could see an apples-to-apples comparison. So we do the project, this is what it costs for a contractor to take it from beginning to end, or we piecemeal it, we have limited, we have some accountability issues, in my opinion, when projects don't go, it's this vendor and that vendor, and there's, there's so many hands touching the project, it gets very difficult. And so it sounds like a great idea, and the presentations are always great, but the closing of the loop and coming in under budget and on time, if we have one vendor that says, "This is the job, this is what it'll be done, this is what it costs," it'd be nice to compare what we really are saving in terms of bang for our buck. So I, I think at this stage, clearly the need is to get the ramp, so I'll withdraw my questions and I'll just, I'll just roll with it. I think we got to get the project done, but in the future, if we could have that come forward, and I've asked, you know, several times for that, and it'd be appreciative if, if you're not able and time-wise, you've got other things going, bring the deputy supervisor in, or Mr. Supervisor, if you could see, get a complete sort of, one contractor giving us a presentation, it'd be nice.
Trustee Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Trustee Joseph, like, moving forward, I think you have a, I think it's a very process, I'd like to see codification of it and utilizing it, makes a lot of sense. In this instance here, I as a liaison to the Historical Society, I believe, Trustee Vosberg, the supervisor, and Mr. Sonberg, we met, I believe it was on the 23rd of July, we had a pretty intense discussion on it, and there was discussion about the cost and that, of the best way to get this done, and that's, that's why this product is here tonight on this purpose, to get the, to get this thing put together so there's accessibility to the structure there, and there was other, other components came up there too, is accessibility of, for individuals that might, might have disabilities using the restrooms, things like that. There was a lot of other components there, and this product tonight that you, this recommendation was predicated on that. Moving forward, I think you have some good ideas, but I think at the time, I think we did a good job trying to put it together. Thank you.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
So, to, just to touch on some, Trustee Joseph's questions. You are right, we do put a lot of work into these projects, and it shows every project we've done, large projects, small projects, all of them have been under budget, all of them have been within, except, within the approved budget that I had. Every project we've done so far, not one has been under budget. The majority of the funding from the projects we've done, a big chunk of it, has been grant-funded. It takes a lot of work, especially through COVID, to secure that grant funding and dial down these numbers, and the reason we're able to do this...
I don't want to talk about your performance history or projects that you bring under budget, I'm talking about this particular agenda item and the way that you bring it to the board. So I, I'm really not interested because it's going to cause a rebuttal and then we're going to go for a while. I support this project, I believe it needs to be done, I'm talking about the mechanism that it comes forward, and I really, again, I appreciate the work that you do, but I don't want to get into grants and under budget because I have issues with some of those, and I don't know that anybody wants to hear it. So we'll just stay on this issue, and I'm good with that, and I'm, and you have my support, and I want to see this project done.
Any further comments from the board? I have a motion by Trustee Anderson, supported by Clerk Barry, to approve the recommendation of Facilities and Operations... I'm sorry. Public comments. Mr. Lefada, I'm sorry again.
Thank you. I, I would just like to make a note that the Historical Society is on township property, and the township does hold the liability insurance, and they are liable if anybody gets hurt on that historical property. So it is, in the name of safety and liability, a good idea to fix the ramp, make it ADA compatible, but I still agree with Mr. Joseph that there should be a different way of these projects coming to the township board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefada. Any further comments? None being seen. I have a motion by Trustee Anderson, supported by Clerk Barry, to approve the recommendation of Facilities and Operations Department to replace the ADA ramp and deck at the Weller School in the Historical Village, not to exceed an amount of $19,706, and I wrote over the G count, Clerk Barry?
Trustee Anderson?
Aye.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Joseph?
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg?
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott?
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten?
Aye. Item 9G?
Item 9G is to approve a recommendation by Facilities and Operations Department to construct new offices and conference room for the Human Resources Department in an amount not to exceed $18,905 from GL number 101265970000.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve as stated.
Support?
I'll support it.
Trustee Joseph? Director Sonberg?
Thank you. This, the Facility and Operations Department was asked to construct a conference room within the Building Department Storage Area down in the far area of the building. The original purpose of that room was to give the new IT staff a temporary location. Then the use of the room and the, and the additional meeting room and conference room was also to be, like, factoring in it was going to be an open space where you could have the IT staff and also have conferences and meeting rooms, because that space is way underutilized and just have a bunch of storage. It's, it's a great space, but you know, when everything was paper, we took up a lot of space. Now that we're going digital, we're going to repurpose that space and put it to better use. So, once that area was roughed in, the supervisor and the HR director felt that this space could be better utilized for Human Resource Department. The location provides an appropriate area to perform HR functions in a confidential manner. manner. The space was reconfigured, which is this price is based on, to include a conference room along with an office for the HR director, the HR coordinator, Bennett Fitz coordinator, and a workspace for the payroll specialist. The quotes you can see are gathered below. And this, I would like to speak to the chart you'll see in front of you, going to trustees Joseph's earlier questions, which is a great point, but you can see in this chart, you have three categories, two of which are contractors. One is Elite Drywall for the price of $9,050, $9,950 to complete the whole project. The other is Emerald Coast for $5,675 to complete the whole project. And then you had our preferred electric, electric, electrician, Mr. Fury. What we did and what we're able to do, because we have a good relationship with the contractors, is what I like to say is like an à la carte approach where you take all the best numbers and you have those trades do those numbers. Most GCs don't like to do that because usually you make 10 to 15%, even more nowadays, off all your contractors. So what we do is we pick apart the proposals, we take the best numbers, we, we work with those contractors and we assemble one number that works best. This is a practice we've done all along in construction. People appreciate it once you understand it and it gives you the most bang for your buck. That's why I say bang for your buck. So it has nothing to do with internal staff, it's just working with trades. The more work you give trades, the better prices you get. We're just now starting, because of all the work we're doing, to get a lot better prices and a lot more loyalty from some of our trades. So as you can see here, there's a, their estimates are included in the package. And if you have any questions, I'll gladly take them, sorry.
Thomas from the board? Trustee Joseph?
The background, in the executive summary says, "FNO department was asked to construct a conference room within the building department's storage room area." When was that request made?
That was back before the new supervisor. We thought that was a good use of space because that space was opening up. And with the idea that we're going to need to move some people around and remodel some offices, it gave us some flex space in the corner of the building.
What, what, what was the estimated cost do you anticipate for that project in-house, bang for your buck and all that? What was the, what was the anticipated cost? How many man-hours did you anticipate putting into that?
The conference room?
Yes.
I don't have that in front of me. I could pull that up for you, I'd gladly send it to you.
Again, it's, I won't reiterate all of the previous comments because I know that you touched on them in this presentation. It has to do, and, and my comments are more perhaps for the supervisor and the deputy supervisor. You see the layout of the project and the idea that we are, we are taking advantage of relationships and loyalty and people that want to do work, but really what you're describing is that the FNO department is acting as the general contractor. And you estimate a 10 to 15% savings by acting as the general contractor, as if your time is only to do what? You're not taking away from other things that, that you were hired for in the township. I would say that you're devaluing your work and the work of your staff by assuming that because there's no accountability for those hours, that they are free hours. Because I would argue to you, and I would ask again procedurally to take a look at this, when we have problems in other areas, and I don't want to go far afield here, but we have problems in other areas like cracked heat exchangers and, and potential carbon in the building, and we say we're saving 10 to 15% acting as our general contractor, when you, you have issues that were, that were brought to then supervisor, Treasurer LaFatta. You, you go, well, we have an FNO department for that, but we don't if FNO is acting as a general contractor and saving 10 to 15% on all these GC jobs. So there isn't, there is a cost for these projects. And when they come to the board, I would just like to see what the total cost is and not devalue our people and assume that their hours are free. Mr. Sonnenberg's a talented guy. He, he is appropriately paid and he makes a handsome salary. His salary counts in the GC savings. And so let's take a look at it all, because the other thing that we get from a general contractor is we have accounting layers built in. And it's accounting that the whole board can pull an invoice and say, this is the contract we had with the general contractor, this is where we came up short. And unfortunately, we've had a past practice of when that exercise is done with FNO, FNO doesn't answer to the board, they answer to the supervisor. So you get some account, accountability questions that become very difficult and we have board members that find themselves on a need-to-know basis and animosity. So I would like to see on the front end, a general contractor built in, what does it cost to have it done versus how can we save and factor in the employees that are working from the township on these? Because we're going to see in another agenda, they got other work to do that they can't do that we're going to contract out. That's no longer free. That's in the 10 to 15%. So again, more procedural and I realize, and I've talked to Supervisor Kirsten, and I know the layout of the building and what you're trying to accomplish here, and you're doing it together, you're doing it together with the existing, you know, components and team members to get it done quickly. And I know your needs and I think it's an appropriate expenditure, but procedurally, we got some work to do. I'm glad Mr. Duchesne is, is nodding back there because I know this is right in his wheelhouse. Thank you.
Clerk Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I'm very glad to see that this project is finally getting done. It's way, way overdue. Our Human Resource Department's location is not conducive at all to the mission for which that department is assigned. It, it's not, it's, the confidentiality issues are virtually impossible to maintain. This needs to be done as soon as possible. I'm glad that we are repurposing that area. As you know, clerk's department is doing everything that we can and have an RFP out now to find out what it will cost to digitize those records back there so that we can get them out of the way and use it for more valuable purposes such as this. And at the, at the very least, find some other way to manage our space there. And human resources, I can't think of a better way to do that and sooner the better. I, I recognize some of the points that have been brought up here today. I'm comfortable at this time and that's why I asked for, made the motion to approve this expenditure. I'd like to ask for the board's support as well for the 18-9 to get this done. It's far, well, well overdue.
Thank you, clerk Barry. Trustee Vosberg.
Thank you. I support this. And I'm assuming there's some kind of prints available that's, otherwise the bidders wouldn't have been able to-
Yeah, I'm sorry, we have detailed CAD drawings. I apologize if they weren't in your-
Could, could you just-
Next time I'll be sure that I bring, I-
That's fine. I don't need-
I will bring a computer rendering when we talk about these so we can discuss them in more detail.
I'm just curious what it will look like, so if you could just send an email with that, would be helpful.
We will do that, I apologize.
And then, this, I guess this question's a supervisor. This, this is just for the construction. Will the furn, will it require furnishings, furniture later or are we going to use existing furniture?
Yes, there's going to be a furniture expense in, that we'll bring, probably bring back to the board if it doesn't come in under the allowable amount for that department.
All right, thank you.
Have a motion by Supervisor Kirsten? Oh, I'm sorry. Public comments. Mr. Speaker. Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Thank you. I have a motion by Supervisor Kirsten. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion by clerk Barry, support by trustee Joseph, to approve the recommendation in facilities operations department to construct new offices and a conference room for the Human Resources Department in the amount not to exceed $18,905 from general ledger 101265970. Clerk Barry.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Joseph.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Vosberg.
Aye.
Treasurer Elliott.
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten.
Aye. Item 9H.
Item 9H is to approve a recommendation by facilities and operations department to amend the contract with Ultimate Lawn Service to include lawn care at Brandenburg Park and Weber Paddle Park for the remaining 2021 season in the amount of $2,250 for Weber, Weber Paddle Park, GL number 101752931002, and $6,000 for Brandenburg Park, GL number
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve as stated.
Support.
Clerk Barry, trustee Vosberg, support by trustee Vosberg. Director Sonnenberg.
So, good evening once again. We've had a lot of discussion on this, so I'm going to give you a little background on where we're at and how we got here. So on April 28th, 2020, township board approved a two, two-season contract, so for '20 and '21 with Ultimate Lawn Service to provide complete lawn care services at the municipal office, Historic Village, Union and Heart Cemeteries, fire station 1, 2, and 3, Bay Harbor Pump Station, Community Center Park, the youth center, the DPW, and 10 sanitary and sewer pump stations. The contract also includes fertilization, weed killer along the fence lines at Brandenburg and Pollard Parks. On March 23rd, 2021, the board approved the request to increase the scope of service to include lawn cutting at Pollard Park for 27 weeks from May 1st to October 31st at a cost of $600 a week or $16,200 for the season. So our current request is, as mentioned, to increase that contract to, to cover Brandenburg Park and Weber Paddle Park. So with our work order system, we've been tracking and I think it's about time where we come in and we'll do a presentation so you can really see the data that we're capturing. We typically, like our seasonal guys, do grass cutting because we could do it at a lesser dollar amount. And it took our seasonal guys, which were paid about $14 an hour, three guys, three eight-hour days to cut Brandenburg, which is about 22 acres. It's a lot of property. It's really about 16 acres if you take the parking lot out, but it's, it's a lot of grass to cut and it's a lot of time. So Ultimate's doing it for 600, $600 per week. And the problem we had when we would do it is training young guys to grass cut, you think it would be simple, but weed whipping, blowing, doing all those things in a professional way, keeping the grass off the parking lot, was always time-consuming for our guys to go back and double-check. So with a professional lawn service, you do get, one call does it all. And now, I'm not saying our guys aren't capable, but once again, we hear us discuss this point multiple, multiple times. When our guys are paid a rate of a higher dollar amount, there's plenty of work, higher dollar amount work that they're doing now. And we can go into more detail about that. And the Weber Paddle Park, same thing. We had two guys, four hours each at about $14, which is about $224 a week. With Ultimate, we're getting it done for 150. And the other problem for us, problematic, when I started here, we had roughly 10 full-time staff and four seasonal staff. And seasonal staff were easy to get. Now, everybody knows with employees and work, it's hard to find people. So we're down to about six boots on the ground and two seasonal staff. We had four, two left. So we're down half the seasonal staff and a lot less full-time employees. So we're really trying to make this make sense and I think it's a smart move for the township. It's saved us some money in the long run, but I'll be curious to see what the board has to say. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Sonnenberg, I know Dylan had a song out in '79 that you got to serve somebody and I know that our workers are directed to do things. In the last year and a half, you took a look across the mighty Salt River at the nature park and you'd see our township vehicles marshaled out there, whatever, they were doing extended days. I did make a request on a, I wanted to see what the work product, what was going on. I didn't receive it. I was invited to come and look at the process, how they, how they come up with the hours, but I never did get a listing of what hours are spent where by our DPW or our FNO workers or whatever. You go up and you, you look at Brandenburg and all the work being done there, and I know it's supposedly contracted out. Then again, randomly, our township workers are over there. The Paddle Park, you see our township workers over there. And I know that might have been the way things were done before and I hope there's a little bit of a change here because this, this February, this February, we were given the opportunity to purchase a $19,500 lawnmower that was tailored or constructed according, if you look at the discussion at night, specifically for Pollard Park, the contour of the land. Also that only township employees would be using that, that machine to cut the grass over there. Month later, March 23rd, I don't know, there was a question about what happened to that lawnmower, and I know Mr. Joseph, that was the time that you were mentioning that lawnmower was cutting down the milkweed or what. But suddenly, we had a item on the agenda after we bought this pricey lawnmower that $16,200 to cut Pollard Park between May 1st and October 31st. Tonight, we have another bill to cut the grass over Paddle Park and Brandenburg, total amount of $8,250. I'm going to end this just by saying that, perhaps you too, sir, you received your marching orders. By moving forward, I would hope that we stop seeing our township personnel working at these other places and maybe picking up historically or traditionally what they did on our township, on our campus here. That's it.
Trustee Joseph.
I won't, I won't replow the field, but the history that we heard, Pollard Park, April 28th, the contract was entered into for a two-year. The, the key ingredient that I thought was left out in the historical recapturing was a $19,500 piece of equipment that we were told would not leave ruts in ball fields and it had like tank wheels on it to displace the, the weight of the apparatus. If I recall, the sales pitch on the April 28th and why we were contracting out for things like cemetery, the fire station, township grounds, Historic Village and so forth, the pitch at that time was, we don't have a facility to, to store the necessary equipment, so we have to travel with the equipment. And that made sense to me, like you traveling with the equipment. Then you say the areas that we have equipment, we need more equipment. We purchased the more equipment and then you come back and say, well, we, we have trained people that don't belong on tractors when we have such other projects going on. And then you say tonight, we have young guys that we have to train to use a weed whacker. See, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a pitch breakdown. And I would like for you, and this again is more procedural moving forward, I don't want to be pitched. I know as trustee Anderson said, that was your role in previous administrations. I just want to have a presentation like we heard from all the other department heads tonight. Ms. Bauer, I know her personally, she has very strong opinions about, and she wanted desperately to, to say a few things, but that's not her role. She's not selling anything, she's not giving us bang for our buck, she's not trying to, to sell an agenda item. And you've been put in a very bad situation. And I, and I want to see you relieved of that. I don't want that pressure for you. I don't want you to have a negative experience in front of the board. You just come forward, you make the presentation, you don't have to rebut, you don't have, you're not personally involved in that. It's not, it's not your place. And it was under previous administrations and I think, Mr. Supervisor, I appeal to you and I know that you're putting things in place with a new deputy supervisor, but procedurally, these things have got to change. Mr. Sonnenberg shouldn't be in a position where he comes forward and feels like, you know, he's under attack. He, he is simply bringing forward an agenda item. He lays it out and that's it. He doesn't have to sell anybody or pitch anything because he's not a stakeholder there. He's not a stakeholder there. But again, the earlier pitch, all due respect, it falls apart dramatically because you come up two agenda items later, you talk about six grand, and I would argue that that six grand goes into your 10% to 15% savings by you not being the general contractor or hiring a general contractor. And all of these areas where we're unable to really account for where your people are, what they're doing and why, is a detriment to them. And really what's happening, and I'm sure at some point, if I were the union representative, I'd want to know why we're outsourcing everything and we're, we're putting our seasoned people, thank God the garbage cart thing is dying, but we put our seasoned people in positions like that. And we were pitching that when it was, when it was the, you know, the supervisor previously. So I'm glad that we're getting away from these things, but I'd like to see you just come forward, lay out an agenda item and give us the numbers that we asked for and leave out the presentation. The salesmanship is, is falling apart- that we asked for, and leave out the presentation. The salesmanship is falling apart, and I don't appreciate it, and I just want the numbers, and then we'll take a vote.
Any further comments from the Board?
I would like the opportunity to respond. So, like any position I've ever had, positions evolve, you get a better understanding of the way things go. So, let me address a couple of your early comments.
I don't need it. I don't need it. If the supervisor, if the supervisor has the, you have to get permission from the supervisor. I don't want to hear from employees and their position on their jobs. This is not part of the agenda item, and in this particular employee, I've had some serious issues with the disrespect to township board members, including a HR issue that I took. I don't want to hear from him.
I'll interrupt it, Josh. We got a motion from Clerk Barry. I'm sorry, one more. Mr. Speaker, please.
John Speaker, 5397-8 Conner Drive. We get a pitch from Josh every time he comes up to this podium. I've been listening to him for over a year, and it's excuse after excuse after excuse. So, tonight, it's one call does it all. Well, I haven't seen one call does it all with him since I've been coming. He said something about $14 an hour. I don't know any contractor that's cutting grass at 14 an hour. I have somebody that cuts my lawn. He was paying somebody $18 an hour. The guy quit and went to another company that offered him $20 an hour. My question, along with Trustee Joseph, is, I mean, you know, we're at the point in this township where we're subcontracting the snow out, we're subcontracting the grass out, we're subcontracting everything out that our normal in-house employees used to do. So, what's gonna be left for the township employees if we keep continuing this? But this is in reference to, about three months ago, Josh came up to the podium, and, you know, he asked for a TRX, a lawnmower, which was $19,500 that he was gonna specifically use for Pollard Park. The next thing I know, at the next board meeting, we're subcontracting that out. So, I'm just curious, if we're not gonna use that lawnmower, why do we have it? Why don't we send it back? And then, he talked about six full-time employees that were down. Well, I think we're down to six full-time employees, because a lot of them have been pushed out. So, and as far as seasonal employees, if we advertise, there's a lot of students in Chesterfield. There's a lot of people in Chesterfield that we could get to cut grass. So, I think we should not subcontract this out. We should use our people that used to do the work here and continue to keep the work in-house. Thank you.
Mr. Lefada.
Based on what Trustee Anderson said and the questions he had on the work order system, and it seems the controversy we have of what I'll call in my life is you either produce it in-house or you buy it outside. It's called a make-by comparison, which I don't think we did an accurate one. But to solve Trustee Anderson's job, the software package that Facilities and Operations has is not B.S.A. compatible. If it was, then you put the work order number on it, you put the laborer's number on it, and you put the equipment number that's used on it, and what it does is it blows that whole cost through and gives you total costs, including burden and overhead, for that person on that job. It's simple. But, and if we come to the point in time when we have to renew this software package, I would really consider getting something that's compatible with our current system that we use in finance. It'll help us immensely. The other thing is, is there's some other considerations we need to look at. We're contracting out grass, we're contracting out snow, and I see the notice on there that we might be selling the grass at property, which has the snow dome or retainer on it. So, maybe, you know, we're getting close to winter time, and we got some time, maybe we need to put out a total project cost, ask for, request for quote, for both grass cutting and snow removal, because it's gonna be a big number, and have the snow removal people take care of salting. And if we need bags of salt to put a couple bags here, we can buy pallets and store them inside. But we're gonna, we're gonna get ourselves caught in another expense when we sell the property on grass. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bring it back up to the Board. I have a motion by Clerk Barry, seconded by Trustee Vosberg, to approve the recommendation by Facilities and Operations Department to amend the contract with Ultimate Lawn Service to include lawn care at Brandenburg Park, Weber Park for the remaining 2021 season. Clerk Barry.
Mr. Supervisor, with the permission of the Chair, I'd like to make a couple of comments before I call the roll.
Yes, please. I'm sorry. I missed you.
It's okay. That's okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. I was here full-time when we didn't have a Facilities and Operations Department, when we had our DPW, and we had people who did their best to try to maintain the properties. Supervisor Kirsten, I think you found out firsthand how much things were not handled as well as they should have been. One of the things we always talked about was the benefit of subcontracting lawn service, snow removal, some of those other things. And I agree, I was not happy with the equipment purchases that we've made previously, although I recognized the need for them at the time. I would like to see us go farther in this direction than we have in the past. I'd like to see us subcontract more of this type of work out, because I think we've done assessments over the years, since 2012, 2013, that have demonstrated that the cost of maintaining equipment, the cost of purchasing, maintaining, warranting, all that kind of thing, the human resources as well, the personnel that it takes, that going the subcontracting route as the item we have in front of us proves to be the better way to go. And so, the notion that, you know, we're parsing out all of this stuff, at the end of the day, I would say, look back at some of the assessments, and I'm sure that Finance Director Bauer probably has those somewhere back. She said, I think she keeps everything. So, I think she probably has some of those, and maybe we can take a look at them and see historically how this has always been the better way to go, but because of one reason or another, labor contracts and so forth, we didn't have the ability to do that. Now, we do, and perhaps we need to look at doing this long-term for all of our properties and maybe offloading some of this equipment. Not only will it help us to recover some resources, but it will also prevent us from having to maintain and store and warranty all of this equipment in the future. I would just as soon see if, get rid of all the equipment as much as possible and go to a subcontracting operation. So, that's one of the reasons why I made the motion to adopt this particular item, so.
Trustee Vosberg.
Thank you. I just want to say something in defense of our employees, that hard-working people, and the Director of Facilities and Operations comes up with all kinds of good ideas that he brings forward, some things we do, some things we don't. I'm sure there's more conversations in the supervisor's office we're not aware of that, you know, work or don't work, whatever we decide to do, but I think it's just uncalled for, to be speaking rudely about our employees. If there's an issue, then take it to the HR Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Supervisor, just one last. That was my protocol to address Clerk, Trustee Vosberg's comments. Take it to the HR Director. I had a specific problem with exactly what we're talking about tonight. I took it to the HR Director, and the Board received a notice from the supervisor that the day-to-day operations are maintained by the supervisor statutorily. That's a fact. So, my issue is with the procedure and the way that we come up. There's no attack of any employee. I just don't want to see an employee placed in a role that is erroneous and is not necessary. Don't have to sell anything. You're not part of the sales team. That was the comment, and that was the concern, and that wasn't the practice before. I believe it will be moving forward now, because we have a new supervisor here, but that practice needs to end, and the sales routine is over.
Clerk Barry, please call the roll as I stated.
Clerk Barry, aye. Trustee Vosberg?
Aye.
Trustee Anderson?
No.
Trustee Joseph?
No.
Treasurer Elliott?
Aye.
Supervisor Kirsten?
Aye. Item 10 addendums?
There are no addendums this evening.
Item 11, I would try and skip it, but I can't. Public comments. Tried all night, and it wasn't successful, so.
Paul Lefada, 48055, Maryland Drive. Chesterfield residents that practice their civil duty and civic duty come to the podium and ask questions or make comments. In place of logical answers, we're shunned with responses, and I'll quote from past board reading videos. "You don't understand best practices, extreme confidence. I'm proud of my team. All are fallible answers, capable of making mistakes, being deceiving, liable to be erroneous or inaccurate." Chesterfield's civil-minded residents are persistent and want credible answers. They are accused of making personal attacks, unstantiated threats, and recently being called mean and nasty. I like satire. One of the most notable themes in George Orwell's Satire, 1984, is censorship, especially in the Ministry of Truth, where through indoctrination and manipulation of public archives and laws, which we can compare to township processes and procedures, are changed to support political indoctrination and propaganda. Chesterfield Township has an array of looming issues, which Trustee Joseph calls Easter eggs, as a result of errors made. Quoting Candace Miller, "All is not an act of God. There is incompetence and mismanagement." Surprisingly, no one claimed Candace Miller's comments were a personal attack. No one called Candace Miller mean and nasty. Candace Miller's comments may have prompted a resignation to avoid somebody's responsibility and accountability. Based on tonight's agenda items, based on the cart and the sale of the property issues, I think that our last past supervisor, Danny Acavetti, did more damage to the township than Michael Lovlock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lefada. Mr. Speaker?
John Speaker, 5397-8 Conner Drive. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor Kirsten, for putting a lid on that trash cart program that we were losing over $200,000 a year for. Good evening, Township Board and Chesterfield Township residents. My name is John Speaker. I'm a proud Chesterfield Township resident. I'm gonna be called mean and nasty for speaking the truth from Trustee Vosberg. My statements of the truth have even been misconstrued as a tax by Ms. Elliott, who is looking for sympathy from the residents. Neither one of them want to hear the truth or want Chesterfield Township residents to know the truth. They want to keep you in the dark. They only want you to hear what they have to say. What's really going on behind closed doors, and why did they both, both of them, put so much effort in trying to silence everyone speaking at this podium? This is our house, the people's house. They still don't, they still, they still, both of them don't get that the residents own the people's house. Both Trustee Vosberg, with the support of Ms. Elliott, want to keep the truth from the residents, because the truth would expose what is really going on in Chesterfield and shed light on how inept both of them are when it comes to governing. For example, both Trustee Vosberg and Trustee Elliott were not prepared for the discussion that took place a few weeks ago when it came to changing the APO to censor the residents from being able to speak five minutes per agenda item to having to speak on all agenda items prior to any discussion taking place. Treasurer Elliott, who supported the motion, paused before she voted because she was confused on what she was voting on. This isn't the first time Ms. Elliott has gotten confused before her vote. I've seen this occur several times at board meetings. All it takes is a little discussion, then the confusion sets in. How do you vote on something that you're confused about? Ms. Elliott supported the motion to silence the residents and silence any and all discussion on agenda items by any residents. Both Trustee Vosberg and Ms. Elliott want to spend our money, millions of tax dollars, with no input or say from the residents. This is what you call a totalitarian move and attempt to silence and censor the residents. Chesterfield Township, you're not getting what you voted for back in November. In the Bay Voice dated July 28th, '21, Treasurer Lefada informs the residents what Trustee Vosberg and Treasurer Elliott's main focus consisted of. Now, keep in mind, it was Supervisor Kirsten's first board meeting. Trustee Vosberg and Treasurer Elliott's focus wasn't about the environment or neglecting maintenance of the township buildings, properties, or fixing the roads or impeding liabilities that affect all of us as residents. For the record, their main focus was to make sure that the residents couldn't speak on agenda items for five minutes after the discussion at the board table, and their goal was to silence you and to censor Chesterfield Township. Unfortunately, they succeeded in getting half of what they tried to do. As residents, we lost two minutes per agenda item. This is not Vosberg's first attempt at silencing what happens in the boardroom. How un-American and unpatriotic is censorship and silencing the residents. This is the board we have today. The change to the APO passed by a 4-3 vote. The nays were Trustee Joseph, Trustee Anderson, and Supervisor Kirsten. Former Supervisor Acavetti, before leaving, appointed Ms. Elliott as the primary liaison to SEMCOG, and Trustee Vosberg as an alternative fill-in. SEMCOG held its first in-person meeting a couple weeks ago in over a year. Where was Ms. Elliott and Trustee Vosberg? They weren't at the SEMCOG meeting. Both of them were at Brandenburg Park for a photo op, a photo op taking care, a photo op over taking care of township business and the residents. This is a lesson both of them learned from Supervisor Acavetti. The former supervisor was about photo ops over governing, deficits over fiscal responsibility, path and parkways over maintenance of township buildings. In the real world, there are consequences for your actions. People get fired for unethical and selfish behavior. I'm asking the new supervisor, Kirsten, to replace both of these individuals from their SEMCOG position and put a couple of dedicated, committed people to Chesterfield. Chesterfield deserves better. Thank you and good night.
Mr. Ward.
All right, Mike Wharton, 50393 Bauer. So, good news and bad news. Good news first. Members of the 127th Air Wing out at Selfridge completed tasks up at Northern Strike at the CRTC site at the Alpena County Airport, and I don't know if anyone's seen the video, but our wing was successful in doing a very historical event in the US military. We had landed an air, sorry, A-10 Warthog Thunderbird II aircraft on M-32, which is the highway that goes west out of Alpena. This was the first time in US military history, this was done, landing a jet aircraft on a rural pavement, a roadway, and taking it off again. So, this was actually some national, even international news, and it was our wing that completed it, and it was a very interesting and momentous occasion, and I was happy to be a part of it, as well as my members at the 127th Civil Engineering Squadron. We played a critical role in it. Aside from that, the bad news, I've come to see the vote last- Aside from that, the bad news that I've come to see, the vote last week on the library millage. I had my concerns with the millage. It was a very tough vote for me personally, and eventually I did vote yes for it. And it wasn't that it was a no vote that concerned me, it was an overwhelming no vote. And when I brought this up on Facebook, which was a mistake, I saw a lot of ill-informed, uninformed, uncaring responses in this. And this really disturbed me in the sense of people saying, "Our library is fine as it is." Then they'll admit, "Oh, I've never been there." Then this notion of, "Well, my taxes are going up by thousands of dollars," and not equating it to, well, yes, if it's over 20 years, it's, that's how millages work. You're, you're thinking everything is that lump sum rather than over two decades. Another thing I've noticed is people saying, "We don't need a library or other types of amenities because other communities in Macomb have this." And my only response to that is, "Well, then why would anyone want to live in Chesterfield if these other communities have this? And thus, it would make more sense for people to move out of Chesterfield and go there." My concern here isn't that we have to have the best of the best here, or, you know, if we don't have the funds, we can't finance something. It's more or less the notion of, "We're fine kicking the can down the road consistently." We're, we're at this point of, we know the growth is inevitable. I mean, we have a, we had a long-time presentation here tonight about a whole neighborhood going up. This growth is inevitable, and thus, you're, are you able to lay down the groundwork for the future for the township to do better? This isn't to say that the library millage was the correct action, and I do hope that something, a, a different format comes into play, and a different plan for the library moving forward does come into play. But by simply doing nothing and then just saying, "Oh, well," I think that the township is starting to erode away the future toward other communities and misusing its unique opportunity for growth right now. Thank you and have a good night.
Any further comments from the board, or from the public? I'll bring it up back to the board. Trustee Vossberg?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. There were some comments made that were just plain wrong, and I'm just going to stick with one, with one of them. And that is, "I am an alternate to the SEMCOG General Assembly." That's a, that's a meeting that's held approximately quarterly. And I would, at that meeting, I would attend as an alternate, and I would vote if the delegate was not there. There was a meeting online through Zoom a couple of weeks before that, before they were back in, in person. I attended that. The first meeting that was held in public was not one that I am part of. I am not part of that committee. I am not a delegate or an alternate to that committee. And I'm sick of hearing that being stated. It was stated a couple of different times, and it's incorrect. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson?
Have a good night. Take care.
Trustee Joseph?
Thank you. Just if I could pick up where the speaker regarding the library left off and give a little more background on the meeting that we had on August 4th with the library board. I was very impressed with a number of things, none of which was defeatist. And the realization that the library board had an obligation to figure out what the role of the library was in Chesterfield was very impressive because these individuals believed very strongly in the millage request, or it wouldn't have gone out. They wouldn't have brought it forward if they didn't believe in it. But they had the perseverance to take a look at what the feedback from the community was. And I think, like Mr. Wharton talked about, the Facebook was disheartening, and it came across as perhaps callous and uncaring, and they didn't let that slow them down at all. What they really focused on was admirable, and that is, if we weren't able to convince the residents why this was a good idea, then we should go back to the drawing board and reevaluate whether or not it is a good idea and in what form does it take. And so, looking at alternatives, and one, one board member actually was interested in meeting with the person that held the opposition. Probably the strongest opposition was Mr. Drollet's Taxpayer Alliance organization. And when I said to, to this board member, "You should reach out to Mr. Drollet because he's a very civic-minded person," and I've had the experience of going before him and presenting a budget that was, you know, important to me. And you go prepared to answer, "Why is this budget expenditure a community good?" And if you are satisfactory in that argument, you'll have Mr. Drollet's support. In this case, it fell short, and he does what he does, and that is a, an advocacy group for the taxpayer. But it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be animosity, and I'm proud of the library board for sort of reevaluating and looking at resources that may be available in the community. And we talked about a number of ideas, and I know they'll be working on them. So, fear not, library supporters. The library board is resolute, and they're not just about coming back and saying, "We want your tax money." They want to provide a product that meets the needs of the community, and they have a real spirit about them, and it was, it was nice to see. I think trustee Vossberg recognized the SEMCOG involvement. I don't agree with a, that somehow there was an abandonment of your SEMCOG duties. I know you as a past president of SEMCOG, and when I was on the board here, there was some, there, there was a hiatus in our, in our community's involvement with SEMCOG. And I brought forward an agenda item, and Treasurer Hartman was on the board then, and we talked about some of the things that SEMCOG could do for us and why it was a good investment, that the dues that we pay annually. And I know that if there's a SEMCOG meeting to be at, you will be there. The General Assembly is what the liaison or the delegate is obligated to go to, and as was pointed out, there are a number of committees, probably a dozen, and then subcommittees. And so, I think the, the, the meeting that was out at, that was occurring during the timeframe you're talking about was not a committee assignment, and that would be something that would be covered in the General Assembly as part of the larger group, because not all members can be present at all meetings, which is the purpose of the General Assembly. So, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with Ms. Vossberg's representation on our, as, as our representative to SEMCOG. She is very well-respected there, and I don't think that she would shirk her responsibilities. In fact, I know that she would not. So, the debates that we had tonight, I thought were, were good. Mr. Supervisor, I know you didn't ask for a report card. Would I give you a B+ tonight? And in the areas where there was any, and there were a lot of difficult potential areas, I think you see that even in heated exchanges, you have the support of your board. You have the faith of your board from one end to the other. And areas that required parliamentarian, you, you checked with the township attorney, who I would also like to, to thank. In the packet, which was 300 pages thick, there was a, a request made of Mr. Seibert. It was made about two days before the action had to be submitted for board approval, and that involved his review of the Lenex EMS contract and the point system. And in our packet, and in the packet that's available online, you could see that the request for a review of these credits and this very complicated relationship, although it's been in the township for a while, required legal review. And that request went to Mr. Seibert at about 4:00 in the afternoon, and it was returned with a thorough review and a legal opinion, which is part of our board rules, within 48 hours. And that's the kind of work that he does, and I've come to really appreciate his thoroughness and thank you for that. Last thing I want to touch on is the, the township employees. The township employees are the backbone of our operation, and having been a trench guy most of my life, I have a deep appreciation for the people that go what arguably would be somewhat unrecognized. They just carry out their day-to-day responsibilities, and we have a tremendous workforce here. And so, I supported strongly the addition of an HR director, a director who's dedicated to the, the resource that is our employees. Unfortunately, we've, we've seen and we saw a little bit of it tonight, and I think it will dissipate very quickly. We've seen a division. Treasurer Lafata was, 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 had no problems coining the phrase, the, the Animal Farm reference, that some employee, all employees are equal, some are more equal than others. And I didn't realize how deep that went until I heard the term "boatworthy," that, that their employees described being boatworthy, and you realize the disparity in the treatment of some of our employees. There are some employees who are boatworthy, and that is, they were rewarded with personal cruises and trips and so forth. On the supervisors, I've referred to it many times as a tree fort, but in essence, you have a special designation for certain employees. And when those employees, one of which I watched, you know, very heatedly and disrespectfully use the F-word in telling Mr. Lafata where he could go in a public forum after a board meeting, I went to the director, HR director, and I thought it was wildly inappropriate. And then the next day, there was an email that was sent out that said, "The statutory responsibility of the employees falls with the supervisor, and so, the department heads are, are answer to, to me and me only." And that created another scenario where a boatworthy employee was untouchable. They were, they were not part of the supervision or overview of the elected officials, and that should not happen, and it will not happen under this administration. And I appreciate the, the leadership that you've shown. I think it is second nature. It's something that I've talked to Captain Franks and Captain McNair about. It's something that your organization prides itself on. Captain Miller, in a paramilitary style of government, the, the chain of command is respected, and the expectations and accountability are all very clear. We're not going to run, and I don't think the supervisor's going to run the township like a police department, but an idea of accountability and responsibility as being bad words are, are no longer, there are no more boatworthy employees and non-boatworthy employees. You're all boatworthy. You're all boatworthy, and you, you have a HR director who's committed to your work environment and making sure that this is a great place for you to work. So, we may have, we may have a few bumps because, you know, we, we don't want to have a situation where we're debating with a township employee from the podium. That's not the role of the department head. It, it just doesn't, doesn't set up well. It just doesn't. So, I think that'll change, and I'm very, very impressed, Mr. Supervisor, with your work tonight and the communication that you bring back to us when you're looking at down the road projects. So, another step forward, and I appreciate you and my fellow board members for the debate tonight. Thank you.
Treasurer Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. On the agenda item regarding the HR office, I do want to say I'm very pleased, after many discussions with the HR director over the last six months, we've talked about using that space in a better way, and I'm happy that we are able to start seeing that used in a proper way, although we may have to figure out where to put the Christmas tree. Also, I want to address something else tonight. There was a resident and also somebody else in the room who spoke to how another person feels or putting words in their mouth, and there's no way to know how another person feels unless that person tells you. And I'd ask that, that maybe just kind of think about those statements when you're, you're talking about how another person feels. I understand also in this environment, it might be hard to recognize what is called a pause. Pause is not confusion. Lastly, I want to discuss SEMCOG. I am the delegate, and I want to respond to the, both the letter and the paper and also the comments tonight. So, many people may not know what SEMCOG is. SEMCOG is called, it's, it's an acronym for the Southeast Michigan Council of Government. It supports local planning through technical data, intergovernmental resources. SEMCOG does improve the quality of the region's water, makes transportation systems safer and more efficient, revitalizes communities, and spurs economic development. As the SEMCOG General Assembly Delegate, I, along with trustee, the alternate trustee Vossberg, attended the General Assembly meeting this June via Zoom. At that meeting, we jointly accepted the Regional Showcase Award, recognizing the Weber Paddle Park. This award was presented to the Chesterfield Township Board on July 13th. Additionally, I, Treasurer Elliott, attended the in-person SEMCOG meet, member meetup on July 14th. In Wayne County, I introduced myself to the SEMCOG partners as a Chesterfield Township Delegate. On July 13th, Chesterfield Township Supervisor Brad Kirsten emailed the board members an invite to attend a walk-through with federal partners to take place on July 15th at 8:00, at 11:00 AM at Brandonburg Park. Myself and trustee Vossberg were the only board members in attendance at that event. At 1:16 PM on July 15th, an email was received by, to the township board saying that myself and trustee Vossberg were missing a SEMCOG meeting. However, the SEMCOG meeting that was being referenced in that email was for the Transportation Coordinating Council. As the Chesterfield Delegate, I am not a member of this council. The walk-through that I and trustee Vossberg were attending was at Brandonburg Park with their federal partners. It was a great success. There were no pictures taken of any people. However, the MSU extension was there taking pictures of the plant life. Chesterfield Township recently hosted a SEMCOG member meetup at Brandonburg Park on July 29th. We hosted many community leaders from around the Southeast Michigan region to enjoy a tour of our park. We were inspired by the, they were inspired by the improvements and impressed with the beautiful new shoreline and talked about much, many ideas and further developments. Thank you, Supervisor.
Clerk Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Just a couple of brief comments because I know it's getting late. When I began my master's program at Wayne State University, the first thing that the dean asked me, because I had had extensive experience in government prior to that, said to me, "So, what do you think of our program? How does it prepare people to have careers in government?" And I said, "It doesn't." And he said, "Oh, I'm really sorry to hear that." And then I went on to explain to him that the policy is easy. Crafting good policy, that's not difficult. Anyone on this board can do that. Most of you out there can do that as well, given the opportunity. Crafting policy is not difficult. Navigating the politics is where it becomes more challenging. And I would suggest that sometimes that's what you see at board meetings. I think it's a lot less now. I'm grateful for that. But we're, we're all finding our way, and we all have growing pains to go through, and so, learning how to navigate the waters of public policy in the midst of politics is sometimes what makes it more challenging. However, I think this board is coming along, and I think that it's going to get better so long as we all are rolling in the same direction with regards to that, in terms of trying to eliminate politics from policy. And I think we're, that the residents in Chesterfield are going to get a high level of service from their board, as well as those who we direct on a daily basis. In addition to that, I would like to thank my board members for their support of the items tonight, particularly the facilities and operations, human resources build-out. Again, I just cannot stress how much that is needed. Thank you for that, as well as your support of the land division ordinance that our department was quite a bit involved with in terms of getting that right and getting that code of ordinances to be fully up to date as well. So, thank you for that. Lastly, and certainly not least, I would like to, like trustee Vossberg several weeks ago, I'd like to wish my husband a happy 30th anniversary. I was married 30 years ago today when I was... I was married 30 years ago today, when I was, you know, five, and it was, it's been, and nobody's buying that. Okay, I got it. It's getting late, so maybe I thought I could get it past you guys, but guess not. Anyway, happy anniversary, Jeff, and I know you're waiting to have dinner, and I think candle of dinner at 10:30 sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a few comments that were, that were addressed here. The word corrupt was used. That's ridiculous. Trustee Vosberg is not corrupt. Treasurer Elliott is not clueless. They are very engaging. They understand what's going on, and the, the, the meanness is just, that I've experienced in three meetings is unbelievable. Supervisor Akavetti did not leave me a sinking ship. Were there projects underway that he had in the pipeline that maybe I could have managed better? Absolutely. And I think one of them was the 26 Mile Road County Line Project. New to my role, I may have missed a few things. There's no corruption in this building, and there really doesn't even need to be mentioned. Trustee Vosberg is a very experienced politician. She's been helpful to me over the last month and a half, along with Treasurer Elliott, along with past Supervisor Akavetti, along with Trustee Joseph, Clerk Barry, and Trustee Anderson. They have all been very helpful, guiding to me, and very supportive. I, I didn't take on this role thinking that I was naive and, and that these, the, this, the mean tone, I was hoping it would, would end, and I'm going to work towards ending it. Josh is a very vital part of the organization here. He, he does work hard. He is overwhelmed. This township has never had a person like him in that role, and it's new. This township, just managing it day-to-day is, is a task. It's much larger than public safety, and it is eye-opening to me in this new role. There are several issues that we need to address. Systems, as one of the persons from the floor commented, this township is lacking in systems. We spend a lot of money on, on hardware and software that we think is going to solve the problem. The problem is, that system is siloed. It's in one department. It's not spread across. And that's where I immediately fell into. Try and fix those systems. Try and create issues to where a cost-sharing program from the county doesn't end up in the DPW and water and sewer. Why it goes there, I don't know. But it shouldn't. We have a township engineer. So, we're redirecting, cleaning up, and Director Duchene is being, he is an asset. He's offering guidance also day-to-day. There are several things that this township just has never been confronted with. SEMCOG. I was at a meeting today, and three of the comments were, "This community is underrepresented. You're missing the boat." There are things that are going on that this, this township is not, doesn't take the time to get involved in. I appreciate the SEMCOG invite. I appreciate learning about them. I'm familiar with them, but obviously, the, the people that I met there, they have reached Historical Village. We had a meeting on Historical Village, and, and yes, Treasurer Lefada, you're right. It's on our property. We own it. There's no system in place to fund and fix that, to maintain it. There isn't a budget. Roadways, 21, 23 Mile Road, there's no, we have a blind item, but there's no money in it. Sidewalks was an issue. All of those things are day-to-day management issues that there really is, they're haphazardly approached, and, and the previous supervisor was very active in trying to fix them and create those systems. With Josh, I, I think, interjecting me into the, to the role right now is kind of throwing a curveball to everybody, and, and I hope that that isn't it. Again, the board's been more than helpful, and the department head's been more than helpful trying to sort this out. But I got to take offense to the word corrupt. I don't like it. I don't like hearing it. There's nobody on this board that I have interacted with that the corruption's got nothing to do with this organization. And with that being said, I'm learning. I'm still learning. There's a lot to learn. This has been very interesting, it's been a very interesting month and a half, and I will continue to, to learn moving and going forward. I would ask that everybody keep the past supervisor, Mr. Jim Ellis, in their thoughts and prayers, if they could. He's currently in the hospital and making a positive recovery, and wish him the best and the family the best. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned.